If I could have your attention, we've just reconvened from a closed session. We had a couple of items. I'll ask our city attorney to make any comments.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The council's in closed session this evening. Conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation to potential cases. There's no reportable action on those two items. Also, we're in closed session on public employee performance evaluation, city manager, and there's no reportable action on that item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. We will now call the regular city council meeting to order. If I could have the roll call, please.
Council members, Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here. We could all rise for a silent prayer and followed by the flag salute, which is by the Girl Scout Troop 311, I believe. Is that correct?
Color guard, attention. Color guard, prepare to post the colors. Color guard, post the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, just for all.
At this time, we will do the agenda approval. additions or any deletions from council or staff?
I believe.
We have one on the consent agenda. We would like to take one of the items off and put it on for a public hearing. And that would be item D4.
D4. So you want to remove it, or?
We just want to put it on regular session. It has to have a public hearing.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, remind me. Okay. I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast with an interruption on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and Shore West cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Okay, thank you. Since I've already covered the approvals, we'll go to public comment, please.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or in any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. First, John Slaughterback.
Yeah, I'm first tonight, huh? Is this speaker working? John Slaughterback, I live in City of Galt. I emailed council and two city managers my concern of the possibility of not obtaining a state revolving fund loan. I received no reply from anyone. My criticism tonight is not directed toward Greg Holliday. He inherited most of the city's problems. My criticism is going to be directed toward council and two city managers who appear to be indifferent to the city's wastewater problems. I have asked this city more than once to address the wastewater problems. When are we going to address the wastewater problems? Now the schedule for completion is so tight, we may have problems in receiving the state's revolving fund loan. I will not accept any excuse for not qualifying for the state's revolving fund loan. This loan will save the residents of Galt millions of dollars on the wastewater plant upgrade. If the city fails to obtain this RF loan, the revolving fund loan, the residents of Galt will once again hear staff talk of eighty dollars a month sewer rates. And nobody on council will have any compassion for the residents of Galt, except maybe Donald Haynes. The only response we will get from council is I accept staff's recommendations. I am surprised that developers are not here complaining about excessive utility rates, which will affect their prospects for home sales. If this city fails to obtain the state's revolving fund loan, I will take a group of people with me, with my complaint, to the regional water control board. They may not want to hear me, but they will hear some of my complaint. This council's indifference of obtaining the state revolving fund loan. Dale Clare, well, you will be foremost in my complaint. You said you were elected to office to make the decision for this city and that no committee should be making these decisions. I'm going to see that you get fair credit for failure if this loan fails. I'm going to give you credit, Clare. I won't stop with just the water control board with my complaint. I will go to the Sacramento County Supervising Meeting and I will complain directly to Don Nettoli about this council's handling of the state revolving fund loan. Again, if you don't receive this state revolving fund loan, and Dale Clare, you will be foremost in my comments. If this city doesn't obtain the state's revolving fund loan, I will spend my own money and inform the public of this city's inability to manage and receive the state revolving fund loan. The Citizens Committee for a Better Galt has more or less disbanded, but if this city doesn't obtain the state revolving fund loan, I will revive that committee and again work for a better managed Galt. Dale Clare, you were elected to office over six years ago. You implied you had the answers to our wastewater problems. Since then, you have done nothing but leased the Catholic Church, Catholic Church property, which did nothing for our wastewater problems. And then you spent four hundred thousand dollars for a feasibility study, which did nothing for our wastewater problem. Then you modified the reservoir pond costing one million, three hundred and ten thousand dollars, which did nothing for our wastewater problem, but caused the majority of our wastewater fines and future fines until the bypass line is completed. If anyone disputes any of my accusations, I will be back next council meeting with a rebuttal to your rebuttal. I'm not happy with this council and the way it's going. I don't want to hear that we don't receive this state revolving fund loan. I won't accept it. Any comments?
Thank you, John.
Um, Mike Hines?
As Mike is coming up, I'll direct Ted, city manager, if you can respond to the email back to Mr. Slaughterback.
Um, I don't want to respond to anything that Mr. Slaughterback said.
No, I mean back in writing. That's what I mean.
Um, the original email.
The original email. If you can respond back in writing to Mr. Slaughterback.
What we need to do is give him the answer that he probably doesn't want from Greg, because we've made application to the agency and we'll identify what we've done.
That's fine. I'm looking at it as a member of the public came and sent a correspondence in, and so we should respond back. Thank you. Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members, I have two items that I wish to speak on this evening. The first has to do with the addition to city code, the section proposed is 2.28.021. This section advocates a change, basically, to the way members of commissions are allowed to be appointed. It basically states that in order to be appointed to any of the commissions or boards or whatever, that the individuals need to be a resident of the city. I strongly believe that's true, and I believe that this section, as advocated by Councilman Meredith, is necessary to ensure that the voices of residents of Galt are heard when it comes to matters concerning the city and its future. The selection of someone from outside the city limits goes against the best interest of the city. The people living in the city are in the best position to advise the city council on what is in the best interest of the community. I live in the city limits and applied for the commission. I believe that my qualifications warranted consideration and possibly selection for many reasons. I have attended several council meetings to advocate for items affecting the quality of life in Galt, such as quiet zones, Boys and Girls Club of Galt, and I've attempted to assist Vice Mayor Barbara Payne in getting people to shop locally. I believe that's a very important item. The city needs to take action to provide for the needs of the youth in this community. Thirty-three percent of the youth in this community are under the age of eighteen, and yet I don't see many things being done to meet their needs. And as all of us know, the youth in the community, if their actions and energies aren't directed in the right way, they become law enforcement problems. And it's a lot cheaper to provide services to the youth of this community and to take care of their needs than it is to go behind them, have them arrested, have them go to jail, and then have to supervise them on probation or parole. So, I want to just comment on the fact that the document that was attached to the agenda item indicated that fourteen percent of the communities surveyed permitted people to sit on commissions without city limit residency requirements. However, they had several caveats. And those that do allow people to sit on these commissions have to be within an area of interest, which may obviously make sense. But, I have to strongly believe and advocate that no one is as concerned about us as we ourselves. Thus, I strongly encourage the city council to adopt or add this change that Meredith Meredith was asked for. I may not have time to cover my second item, but I will at least bring it to your attention. I provided the electronic copies to all the council members. I wish and ask that the mayor advocate at the next meetings for mayors where they meet, whether in California or in the United States, for a change to the law that requires the horns to blow for trains. In countries such as Germany, they don't blow the horns on guarded crossings, and they don't blow them between the hours of twenty hundred hours to zero seven hundred hours. In France, they do similar things. So, it seems to me that the only reason we have this ridiculous rule is the fact that there are people who want to violate logic. When a train horn crossing arm is down and the horns are blowing, and a huge train with hundreds of cars are rolling down the tracks, only a fool would attempt to drive around. And it's my belief that if people are foolish enough to take that kind of action, then they should suffer the consequences. Now, I know that sounds cold-hearted. Second, one of the reasons for this rule has to do with litigation. And the railroads have a strong reason for having this posted. And the reason they do it this way is they don't want to be sued. And I don't blame them. However, if you review the accident records in Sacramento County, you will find that for the most part, there have been very few accidents. And the ones that have occurred, the latest one was in Elk Grove, was a young man who decided to walk down the track after being repeatedly warned by his parents not to do so, with a radio headphone set on, and in spite of the engineer blowing his whistle, it did nothing to save this young man's life. So, I'm just asking for some common sense. And Mr. Mayor, I'm asking if you'd take the leadership role in this case and to start to advocate and get all the communities in this country who live around railroad crossings and get this stupid law changed, so that those of us can enjoy a moderate kind of decent life with quietness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Al Baldwin. And then I'll call you up again under your second item.
Al Baldwin, the concerned citizen of Galt, a community of character. And last week, we showed you that we did give about four or five character awards for honesty, and it's working. And you can see a lot of the banners down Lincoln Way and C Street. The city is actually changing, and the character, one belief by others, is changing. So, we're getting better. We are getting better. Tonight, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that I've noticed in Galt. One of them is the IOF building, the one that we're supposed to turn into a great, maybe Italian restaurant. It's really going to be wonderful, and I'm looking forward to it. And for some reason, there doesn't seem to be very much production, and I think we loaned some money to them to help them out, to get it started. But the cyclone fence on the side of it looks like it's been almost pulled out, and there's easy access to the rear, and I'm just afraid that maybe somebody or some people might get in it. There could be a fire started, there could be some vandalism inside. It just doesn't look like anybody's really working on it. Maybe I'm working and I can't see it, but whenever I go by there, I just don't see any activity. The second one is the new senior complex that's going to be built on Fourth and C, let's say. And we also loaned some money to them to help them out, to get them going, too. And that building over there is a real safety hazard. There's no fence around it. It's half torn down, not even half torn down, but fourth torn down. There's lumber laying around. I haven't gone inside of it, but if I have to, I will. And if I have to show you the exact pictures of it, I will. I'll try not to trespass like I did before on the other ones. But I'll make sure that you'll know what's in it and what's happening. There's nothing going on over there. That shouldn't take more than a day to bulldoze that thing down, at least get it down. There could be people living in it and who knows what else going on inside there. So, it's very unsafe, in my opinion, and I would suggest that maybe somebody look into that. Apparently, nobody's that concerned to look into it right now, because it's been going on for a while. And I'd like to see that thing started. Now, if there's a delay, then I don't know about it, and I'd like to know if there's delays in both those buildings, because if that's so, then the police are probably going to need to use extra time to watch it, or something's got to be done. So, that was my basic concern. And while I'm up here, got a minute or so, John Slaughterback came up here, and he was pretty strong in his ideas. Some things I agree, some things I don't agree when he speaks. Tonight, there's one thing I don't believe in attacking one person. If it's going to be one person, it should be all persons up there, because you all control Galt. Not one person up there controls Galt. It's the council. And if it's not the council, then it's the staff. So, to single out one person, like they assumed I did a couple of meetings back, which I don't feel I did, I think it should be a team together. You either go down together, or you get up together, or you do things together. It should be everybody working together here. And I just don't believe in singling one person out.
Wait, wait a minute, John.
So, nevertheless, he's got his ideas. He's got some good points occasionally, but tonight, since he was so adamant about going after one person, and he did bring up the council somewhere in there, but I think it should be, all you people up there are responsible if there's something to be done, like what he was saying. And if not the staff, and if not, we elected you to do something, and we're asking you all to work, not one person. So, work as a team, get together, and let's get something done in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. So, our next item is information consent calendar. If you would read those, please.
Okay, we have seven items. Number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular council meetings of April 21st, 2009. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, Old Town Craft Fair and Open House. Number four, which was pulled for discussion, the 2009 Justice Assistance Grant. Number five, a proclamation for Municipal Clerks Week. Number six, a word of bid for the construction of Cycle Seven Safe Routes to School Improvements Project. And number seven, proposed ordinance amending Chapter 3.40 of the Galt Municipal Code entitled "Special Transaction and Use Tax for Police Services," to delete a section and renumber the subsequent sections of the chapter.
Move to approve?
Second.
Call for any further discussion? None? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 So, now we're on number four, 2009 Justice Assistance Grant.
Mr. Mayor, the chief's not here, but this has to do with the purchase of eight megahertz radios, and what we need to do is open it for a public comment on it, and then close it, and then take an action on it.
Any further report before I call for the public open hearing? None? No other report?
No.
Okay. I'll call for the public hearing to be open. Any comment from public?
I have no speaker sheets on this item. Can't see anybody.
None?
Can't hear. Woody, do you want to talk?
No, he was saying he couldn't hear. Sorry. Are the speakers up?
I'll turn it up.
She's going to turn the speakers up a little bit. Thanks. Okay. None, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments from council members?
Just mentioned, this is something we've been trying to get common communication across a variety of jurisdictions ever since September 11th. This is how far back this item goes.
Right.
And this final component for our city completes that goal to give us the eight hundred megahertz ability to communicate with the other jurisdictions around us. So, I will gladly move the item, because we've been working on it a long time to get done.
I'll second. I apologize. It's a thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve dollar grant, which is a hundred percent funding for that number of radios.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded.
Second.
Any further discussion? None? We'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Approved. Now, we have a couple of presentations. One presentation is by Mike Singleton. Let's say you're number one here. There's three of them. Right, right, Daniel.
Good evening, city council. My name is Mike Singleton. I'm chairman of the board for crime stoppers here in the City of Galt. I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to hand out an award to one of our finest. Let me start by saying that I do believe, in my opinion, that our officers here in the City of Galt, I think are one of the finest in the state of California, the best trained, and they do a great job here in protecting us and our community. So, I don't want to go without saying that we'd kind of be pass that on from the chairman of the board, crime stoppers, and all of us on the board. We appreciate it. Uh, I want to, I want to talk about TJ Geddey. And he's sitting in the back there with him and his wife. He's pretty modest. He doesn't like to have too much attention brought to him. As I've tried to tell him from time to time again, you need a little pat on the back once in a while. I met him a little over three years ago at a, called Business Builders Meeting, and he was doing a presentation and asking for volunteers to help out with getting the neighborhood watch program up and going again. Of course, I, yeah, three times. And I, of course, volunteered, and him and I got to know each other and actually realized we were from about the same area of town. Well, he was a little younger than me, but a few years back. TJ's responsible for getting our crime stoppers board up and running again, so we can get tips out to, or give rewards out to our tipsters that also help fight a crime in our area. Whether the citizens know it or not, it is up to not only the police department, but you as a community, as eyes and ears for our community, to help fight and stop crime. TJ's also been responsible for getting campus crime stoppers going here in Galt. Him, along with our other officers, have been pivotal in lowering our crime rate in the last three years. You can see the statistics. I believe they're on our website. I'm not quite positive on that, but you could always go down to the police department and ask for it. So, if I could, oh, one more thing. He doesn't work eight to five. This man here, he comes to our board meetings. I don't know how many hours he's missed with his family. I'm sure his wife can testify that it's been many hours. He also coaches football. So, he's just a great man in our community, a great hire for our community and for fighting crime here in the City of Galt. So, I got an award here. I'd like to have the board come up, and Bowery, and Dale, and Lironda, to give to, and Kim, there we go, to give to this man. And I would like everybody to applaud him, because he hates being embarrassed, and this will do it, so. (APPLAUSE).
This is from us, from the chairman of the board and all the board members of crime stoppers.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you've done for our community and your continuing to help us.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody want him to say anything?
No.
I think they want to hear from you.
I don't get the microphone. For people that know me, my voice carries. I just want to thank our community members that have been willing to step up and be part of the process to help us change our community. It's a lot of work. It's an effort that has to continue each year. And it's just, it just goes to show you our community and what they're capable of doing when we all put our minds to it. And I want to say thank you to our neighborhoods we're working with, the schools, the officers, the detective division that I work in, just great folks, Lieutenant Updegrove, the chief, Lieutenant Erickson. It's a great department. And, you know, with the support of the city, I think we're going to continue to do great things. And I thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before we have the next presentation, TJ, I want everyone to know that when we just had the, and I'll talk about it later at the end of the meeting, but our mayor's forum on gang awareness in our community. TJ is going out to the schools, and they're putting basically the same program on to our youth. And he has been very instrumental, along with the police department, with pulling together multiple agencies and helping crime stoppers. And he doesn't like for me to mention this, because he says he didn't do it, but he is instrumental in us having approximately fifty neighborhood watch programs in our community. So, with, and I know it's the people, and I know it's you guys that are there, but it's TJ the one that's out there meeting and talking with you and getting that all coordinated. So, thank you. Andrew has a presentation.
For our next presentation, I'd like to call Sherri Daly up to the podium. While she's getting herself ready, I just wanted to provide a little background on what we're going to be doing tonight. I think all of you know that have children or that are around children. These are difficult times for kids to stay above all the negative influences that they're just inundated on a daily basis. You've got television programs, you've got movies, you've got drugs at an early age. All of these things are trying to get our children to do bad things at an early age. Girl scouting, which is a great organization that is active here in the City of Girl Scouting, which is a great organization that is active here in the City of Galt, is training young ladies to be responsible citizens. It's important with Girl Scouts to have good individuals that are willing to take the time to mold these girls into these responsible citizens. Tonight, we're going to recognize a woman that's given over 25 years of service to the Girl Scouts Organization, and we're going to recognize a young lady that, as a young Girl Scout, has already achieved 117, which is, I, I believe, 100% of the badges that she's eligible for. So while I'm walking up, I'll turn it over to Sherri to provide a little.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, tonight, we're here to honor Judy Hunt, who, as Andrew said, has earned her 25-year pin in Girl Scouts. Now, let me tell you, that involves being a Girl Scout way back when, I won't embarrass her. It also involves being a Girl Scout leader for her children, and then it involves being a Girl Scout leader for her grandchildren. And I can't tell you how wonderful it is to have the resource of somebody with 25 years' experience at anything to help your organization. She's a great role model. She gets out there and hikes with these girls, and she keeps all of our paperwork together. We just couldn't function without her. And 25 years of service to any organization is such a terrific thing these days, so I really appreciate Judy's help. Honors Judy. Partly due to Judy's role modeling, we have an accomplishment that just, I can't find anywhere nationally or locally that has been accomplished. Brooke Hunt has done 117 junior badges, and each badge has six requirements, including community service and learning and career exploration. And it ranged from pet care to, um, environmental causes, to learning about your heritage, government, et cetera. I just, I've never heard of anyone doing this. It's, and we have all cheered her on. We've, the girls have been at meetings helping her get her badges done. She's gone to camps and day camps, and it's just an incredible feat to be able to have done this at, at such an early age. I'll have, uh, Brooke come up and show you, um, modeled on her vest, all of the accomplishments that she's, turn around, just turn around, let everybody see it. She doesn't have room for all of her fun patches because all of the, well, they're fun too, but all of her badges are covering her vest, and she's just done a fantastic job. Thanks, Brooke.
We've prepared a proclamation for both of you in recognition of your service to the community and your development in the Girl Scouts Organization. I'm going to read a little bit of it. Whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with courage, competence, and character to make the world a better place. And whereas through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls develop the skills and lessons that will serve them throughout their lives so that they may contribute to their communities. And whereas, Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities in math, science, sports, technology, and many fields of interest that can expand their horizons. And whereas, more than 3 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating the American tradition and welcome girls from every background to join. Whereas, Judith Hunt has contributed over 25 years to the Girl Scout Organization through a desire to serve the young ladies of her community. And whereas, Judith Hunt has recently been recognized by the Girl Scout Organization for that service through the award of a 25-year pin. Now therefore, I, Andrew Meredith, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as a council member in the City of Galt, do hereby applaud the commitment Judith Hunt has made to support the leadership development of America's girls, and do hereby recognize her accordingly before her neighbors, friends, and families here in the City of Galt. What we have here tonight is her 25-year pin, which I'm going to pin on her. We also have a certificate for you. Says awarded to Judith Hunt in recognition of 25 years of service to the Girl Scouts Organization and the young ladies of this community. Here's the proclamation. And then we have Brooke. I'm going to skip on to the bottom of this proclamation because the majority of it is the same. Whereas, Brooke Hunt has displayed an extraordinary commitment to learning and serving the community as a junior Girl Scout. Whereas, Brooke Hunt has completed all 117 junior Girl Scout badges. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as a council member in the City of Galt, I do hereby applaud your commitment that you have made to the community and yourself by hereby recognizing you accordingly before your neighbors, friends, and family. We also have a certificate of recognition for Brooke that reads, "In recognition of her completion of all 117 junior Girl Scout badges in service to herself and her community." Congratulations. Now, it's customary, we're going to make you guys say a few words tonight. So Brooke, she's going to work on her next badge, which is public speaking, and she's going to get it started right now.
Just say hi. You did a great job.
Judith, does she want to say anything?
I've enjoyed working with the Girl Scouts, and I've enjoyed the 25 years, and I enjoy the whole, the whole group that I'm working with now, and they all come to support it.
Okay, we have one more presentation. Chief George Apple from, uh, CSD Fire Department, going to talk to us about weed abatement, weed abatement program in our community.
Sir, good evening, Mayor Shelton, members of the council. Thanks for having me here. Um, it's always happens to me. We always get good, fun presentations in front of me, everybody takes off, and then I get, I got no wear ads, no flack or anything, but it's all right. We'll try to clean up, clean up the community a little bit. Um, as you guys are well aware, it's, uh, weed abatement season again. Uh, Mother Nature doesn't know it, you know, and we're still getting a little bit of rain, but we're going to push her out and we're going to start drying up. And I'm not sure if anybody's seen the, the news tonight, but we already have a little over 200-acre fire burning down in Santa Barbara, Wildland Fire. So it's definitely on our forefront, you know, to get things straightened out. So I just wanted to talk to you about Fire Department's weed abatement program, um, how it works, and, you know, answer any questions that you guys may have. Um, our program actually started officially April 1st. Um, by, uh, CSD policy, we start April 1st. It gives us the amount of time legally to get things pushed through and to the abatement process. What happens, um, on April 1st is we have a, uh, report that goes to the board that lists our past offenders of, you know, previous years and then of the, of the year prior. And what we do is deem those as seasonal and recurrent nuisances, which helps speed up our timeline. One of my goals, um, last year as Fire Marshal was to, to try to get all of our parcels abated prior to July 1, because that's when people really get concerned, when the fireworks start going up. And quite honestly, that's when we get a lot of our fires. Um, so what we try to do is expedite the program. And by doing so, by declaring on seasonal and recurrent nuisances, Health and Safety Code only requires that we notice one time for those past offenders. And so what happens is prior to May 1st, we send out a mailer to all of those. Um, there's a little bit over 500 on that list. Um, they're given and told, so June 1st, to abate their parcels. So we give them that 30-day period, uh, that's required by Health and Safety Code. And then all my inspectors go out, we canvass the neighborhoods, and inspect every one of those parcels as quickly as we can get to them. Um, usually it takes about a week, you know, five business days, uh, for them to be able to knock all those out. In the same time, we're collecting, you know, new, uh, complaints in that, and I'll talk to the new side process after we get through this one. Um, so June 1st, we go out, we do those inspections. If they're not abated, we send, um, a district hired contractor out and abate the parcels for them. So that way, they're knocked out. Um, last year, we had all of our parcels done by, um, July 1. And so I was very happy with that. We really had, um, I don't think that we, we didn't have any major fires, um, that burned in, during the 4th of July period, which I, I consider a big success for us. Yes, it's kind of pushing that time limit down, and you guys will start getting the phone calls, we start getting the phone calls, but, you know, our, our hands are kind of tied with the, the legal side of it in those timeframes. Why is that May 1 deadline or that May 1 timeline important? For us, it's, that's typically when we declare fire season, and they convert from being ugly hazards of, of, um, just weeds to being actually a fire hazard and kind of gives us the ability to come in and start enforcing those requirements. Historically, what we've seen in the CSD, and it's a very similar prod, uh, process with the county being Metro Fire on the north, um, I know some of the other agencies have their own programs, but we typically see about 10% of those seasonal and recurrent nuisances have to be abated by us. And, uh, since last year was the first time of actually going out and abating it right off the bat with that first notice, um, our numbers were up a little bit higher, um, but not significant. And so what we did was, uh, we sent bills out for those to the property owners. Um, about half of those were paid, and then the ones that aren't paid end up, uh, we put a tax lien on them, and then we get, we collect the money back. So that way, there's, there's really no cost to the district for getting the abatement done. Um, again, we, we were successful last year in getting them all done, um, by June, or like I said, the end of June, and then, uh, which previous years, we were looking at almost mid-July before we got abated, which to me wasn't acceptable because that's after the 4th of July and when our real concerns are. Okay? So, so that's the first side, the, the smooth side, if you will. The second side tends to be a little bit more tedious in, you know, the, the mayor, I think, can attest to this one, is if we get a new complaint that has not, you know, been, uh, a violator in the past, what happens is we send them a 30-day notice to abate, um, letter, and gives them 30 days, all the, the requirements for it, and then we'll go out, do that inspection. If it's not done, we give them additional 15 days, which is our typical process for, um, co-compliance. After that 15 days, they have, we have the ability to cite them, the misdemeanor citation ends up going to Sacramento County. We try not to do that. We try to just, you know, keep a little bit of pressure on the property owner to get it abated because our success rate in getting it done through the county has been slim to none, and by the time it gets through the court processes, everything's done. We're looking at late September, October, and what's the, the use, you know? So we've been more successful in kind of pushing it, and then what happens is that parcel goes into the seasonal and recurrent nuisances and becomes, it gets put on our list for early abatement the following year. So that's kind of the, the program in a nutshell. Um, it is, it's out there, all the notices have been out there. I've been getting phone calls already about, I got my parcels abated already, and thank you very much, we appreciate it. And make sure, because we just had a bunch of rain, that you keep it abated, because we will be, be back out. So hopefully that answers your questions. I know that there's been, you know, a couple of phone calls already to, to council members in regards to, you know, some, some parcels out there. Um, those parcels are on our list already, so they'll, they'll, we'll have a contractor out there the first part of June if the property owner hasn't abated it. Now, there's a twist to the whole program that none of us know what the, the answers are going to be, that we haven't experienced yet, is a lot of our, um, bank repo'd homes, you know, and, and what's going to happen on the residential side of things. So I don't know, I don't have that answer. Um, we haven't seen a problem, you know, the last year, but, you know, there's still a lot of them out there, and I, I think that there is that potential that, uh, that they, you know, the grasses are growing longer and longer, and we may not have that ability to enforce. Okay? Um, outside of that, in, in, in the, the process of it, um, we have set up, all of the information is available on our website, in the Fire Department, um, link. You can, uh, if you have, you know, people calling you, you can fill out an online complaint, you can call our weed abatement number, or you can stop by the office and fill out an online complaint there. So it's, it's out there, it's easily, uh, or easy to, to notice us on what, where the parcel is, what the location is, et cetera.
Any questions from council or comments?
No, but you're doing an excellent job. I know you're going to have a challenge on your hands this year, so.
It'll be interesting. Um, the, the one thing that, that really concerns me more on, uh, the, the homes is our ability to actually enforce, um, a lot of times we get phone calls about, oh, my neighbor's backyard is, you know, six feet, the weeds are going over the top, and, you know, we can't go back there without a search warrant. So, you know, if somebody goes and kicks out a, uh, you know, a fence post and we can see it, then we're okay. You know, it's, it's difficult to be able to, to do that. And then we also get a lot of phone calls about, um, you know, it just, a lot of tall green weeds that, you know, I've, I've actually had people in the past that wanted to upset their neighbors and just, you know, let their grass grow, and I had like four or five foot, you know, tall grass, but they watered it every day. And I said, well, I, I can't enforce it, it's not a fire hazard, you know? Ugly's not a crime. And, you know, I try to portray that to people all the time. I would have been arrested years ago.
George, um, I'm glad that you could come tonight. I've had several calls. In particular, um, an example that I'm concerned about is the area behind the Country Villa, uh, mobile home park. And, uh, one of the residents called me, and she relayed to me that last year, it was in May, that there was a fire behind those mobile homes.
Actually, it was in June, and that was our weed abatement contractor that started it.
Well, she said it was in May, so your records are probably more accurate. Um, but, you know, the weeds and the fire doesn't always look at a calendar.
Correct.
Um, so what can we do about that kind of situation? And I know it's on your list for this year as well, but for example, this particular citizen, um, the fire got to their mobile home, caught their automobile on fire, and she is, um, uh, handicapped to some extent, and she is terrified that there's going to be another fire, and she won't be able to get out. Um, so I, again, my question is, the fires don't always wait for the calendar?
Correct.
What would we do about?
That's where I get a throw curve on this one.
Right, it's next.
There's a, no, there's, there's, as I said, our issue is enforcement of fire hazards. And, and will grass burn year round? Yeah, it will. It's difficult, it's a slow-moving fire. Generally speaking, we, we have a, a, a good ability to knock it out. Um, but with that said, you know, we can't control what happens, uh, with the weather, and, you know, this year we get late rains, so things are a little bit greener. You know, previous years, um, they're, they're a lot drier. Um, there's, there's abilities to enforce provisions as a nuisance rather than as a fire hazard, um, that, and that's a lot, a lot of times how we're able to get enforcement on those backyards and the residential yards is through a nuisance abatement rather than a fire or weed abatement process. So it's, it's just a different way of dealing with things, and it kind of goes to that whole court system of, you know, having to notice them, go outside them for a violation of whatever the municipal code is, and then, you know, ends up going to court, and then you get a court order to abate it rather than, um, you know, us being able to do it through the Health and Safety Code.
So under the present system, when would that lot be, um, mowed?
That lot will be mowed as soon as, as soon after June 1st as we can get to it and get our contractor out there.
Okay. And then I, the next step is to ask our code enforcement officer, and I called your office and to ask you if we have anything on the books right now that would address, and I, in fact, I sent photographs of these different sites. One is Simon and Palin, there's two lots there in a residential area, and the weeds are, I'd say, at least three feet tall.
Yes.
Um, what, if anything, do we have on our books that would cover that?
Under the nuisance abatement, I believe that they're in excess of 12 inches, then it qualifies as nuisance, and code enforcement can go out to the property owner, address the property owner in that case.
Could they do it now, or do they have to wait till a certain calendar date?
It's, it's, uh, that's year-round. If, if it's over 12 inches, I believe it's 12 inches, that's considered a nuisance, and , uh, the code enforcement officer can go out there and ask for compliance.
Uh, one of the lots I'm talking about is right next to a senior apartment complex. I think it's called Empire Village on Palin. And one of the calls did come from a resident that was saying, you know, they feel like they're more in danger because they are senior citizens, and some of them aren't very mobile. Um, and I think I've sent you the address and the picture, so maybe we could look into that.
Oh, well, yeah, I'll definitely have someone look into that.
And, and on our side, if you- And on our side, if you guys do have ones that are more concerned because you're getting, you know, those types of calls that I may not be familiar with, email me, call me, whatever, because I get the opportunity to prioritize where our contractor goes first.
I have to say, I had very good cooperation when I called your office and I got immediate response and I appreciate that so much.
Glad to hear that. All right. You betcha.
Thanks, Jay. Did you have a comment? Oh. Open the door.
And I got this card in my book. I didn't know we were going to talk about it. The grass right now is three and a half feet tall, four feet tall. It runs from all the way down to the hamburger joint, all the way by that mobile home park and on up behind Galt Mobile Home Park and on up to the glass company. And when that fire started, it burned the fences down at Galt Mobile Home Estate and burned the end trailer. Then came up and everybody had their hoses over. I was in the warehouse. Then it went on down to the other trailer park. It burned, that's where you're talking about? That lady went to the hospital and it burned her fence down. But right now, it's three and a half, four feet tall. But when I went down to the city, I forget the young man's name I talked to. But then a weed abatement tractor came, you know, with razor blades. And he started cutting and he hit a fence post and then it, he shouldn't have been doing it in the wind. And it just took off like that.
Fire?
Yeah, it started a fire.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next item we have is communications. Do we have any communications? Scheduled matters, ordinances, list?
The planning commission eligibility amendment, Andrew.
Okay, this is a carryover from a previous meeting. Riot asked council to send this back to the planning commission to get their input on what they thought about this proposed code amendment. Going to go ahead and read it right now. It will be section 2.28.021. Under eligibility, it will read, "A person is not eligible to hold office as a planning commissioner unless he or she is, at the time of appointment, a resident and registered voter of the city. If during his or her term of office, a member of the planning commission moves, his or her residence outside the city limits or ceases to be a registered voter of the city, such member shall immediately forfeit his or her office, which shall immediately become vacant." Now, in order to make this a little less confrontational, I'd like to propose that we would add a sentence after this eligibility requirement, which our city attorney had actually suggested to me about a week ago, that would read that at the time that this ordinance, I'll just give the general synopsis. At the time that this ordinance would be adopted, any member of the planning commission that is holding that office would not be subject to the terms of this until such time as he or she would be eligible for reappointment. So if there were any members right now that wouldn't qualify if they applied again, that are sitting on the planning commission, this would allow them to finish off their term. Because with all due respect to the planning commissioner that this would apply to, it's not his fault that there's a loophole in our municipal code. He has a desire to serve the community and it's not his fault there's a loophole in the code. So I'd like to propose that as a compromise, but I'm really interested to hear if council has any alternatives to this. I just, I don't think that no requirement is the right solution for the city. We just, we have to address this.
Well, I think your proposal is reasonable and your suggestion for a slight change is also, you got, the survey done here is on 49 cities and I think there's overwhelming support that shows that these cities, they require that somebody from the planning commission do live inside the city limits. And there's only a handful out of that 49 that would permit them to live within the sphere of influence. And I don't think, and I don't think Randy should take it personal. I surely don't think he does. I think his selection was true and blue and it was somebody he wanted in there and it was well within his means of doing it. But at the same time, I think it helped bring some things to light. And I think this is something we should address and now it's a good time to do it as any. I very much do support this. I think it is important that we have, you know, people out there who are from within our community, who do have our best interest in mind. And that's not to say somebody else wouldn't, but nobody cares as much as we do who live in the community itself. And I think that to the great extent that we've had excellent planning commissions in the past. The current ones, I mean, even before the new council change, we had an outstanding member on the planning commission. I don't think anybody would argue with me on that. Absolute outstanding individuals, all from within the community. So we definitely have the resources and we have more than our share of capable individuals. So I will support Mr. Meredith on this.
Before we go any further, it was just brought to my attention that we had somebody from the public that wanted to speak on this. Liz?
Al Baldwin.
Al Baldwin, I live in the city of Galt. I appreciate you at least listening to me tonight. Sounds like you got it already resolved, but I'm not so sure this is really the best at this time to go ahead and just say, nobody outside the sphere of influence, the city, or within even a mile or three miles or five miles at the most, I would think, cannot become part of this city without living in it. The people that live outside the city, they go to our schools. They get involved with the PTA. They get involved with the sports that we have in our city. They want their children to get the best education they can and Galt's trying to do that. And they're willing to help Galt in any way they can, even though they don't reside in Galt. But they do take advantage of many of Galt's, I guess, pleasures. They buy their food here. They get involved with the community. They pay their taxes here when they buy something. They may know more about Galt than some of the people that even apply for the planning commission at many times. I think this should be a decision that's discussed by the council when they do it. And I think they can look into every aspect they can, what would be best for Galt. It's not just somebody who lives outside of Galt. It's somebody that lives outside of Galt that is involved with the community. I think that they take advantage of our fire department. They, because that's where the fire is, they have to have more restrictions on their homes because they're outside of Galt. We did just pass the fire sprinkler ordinance, but they have to put that up anyway out there if they even have acres. It's just the way it is. So they're involved with Galt in many areas that maybe you're not even aware of. And they do influence the community a lot. And I think they should be considered. And I think the council should be the one considering them because that's their job. They want what's best for Galt and so do some of the people outside the sphere or the city limits want what's best for Galt. Their children go to our schools. They get involved with our sports, our recreation, our swimming, baseball, soccer. It's just like they were living in Galt. And the schools especially need all the help they can. And the schools aren't discriminating and I think we might be. But I think the decision still should be up to the council. I think the council is intelligent enough to pick the right people. And you can say what you want to, but that's my opinion. And I think there's a lot of people in Galt that would agree with me. But of course, it's your decision. It's, you're working as a team and you're making the best judgment you can. So I just wanted to give you my two cents for what it's worth. And I think we should leave it the way it is, at least for now. Maybe if Galt grows or something and gets so huge, maybe you could come up with something. We're still a small town. We don't have a lot of people here yet. And some of the people on the towns, Emeryville, Hesperia, I guess that's how you say it, Placerville, that's a pretty good size. And Red Bluff, that's a pretty good sized town also. So there's other towns out there that are very similar to us in many ways. And that's just what I think and I know you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Hi, I'm Jim Palladini. I do have, I do care more about Galt than you think I do. My kids are fifth generation. My last boy's in high school. I hope to God they have kids. Should be anytime someone should be starting. That'd be six generations into Galt. We pay a lot of taxes here. The original dairy's on Palladini Road. My cousin still operates it. He's got 12 or 15 employees. We have 16, 18 employees all the time. They all have a lot of houses in town. His employees have houses in town. We hear about the sewer. We hear about all these things. We do a lot of shopping in town. And I know probably a lot more of Galt than most of the people on this, on this. You know, we've been here a long time. I've seen good things. I've seen bad things. I've seen places burnt down. I've seen new buildings go up. I really, our kids go to school. You know, we have a Galt address. We've got to pay everything, but we never get to vote. And so I really truly believe, I'm four tenths from the sphere of influence, a mile and a tenth from Twin Cities Road where I live. And I really think I can do a lot of good in the town. Other people that don't live in the town have to see what's going on all the time. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. But just for the record, Mr. Palladini, I'm not questioning your qualifications, just so you know.
No, but you always say that you have the best interests. No, we all have the best interests. I see so many things that go on. If I didn't care about Galt, we'd have had a dairy somewhere else. Maybe a few generations back and been somewhere else, other place. We love Galt.
Well, I appreciate that and I'm glad to hear you say that.
And Mr. Palladini, I know that your heart's in the right place with this. And I think that you might be the exception to what could possibly happen with nothing in our ordinance that requires any type of relation to where you live to the city. You've been here a long time. Your family's been here a long time. But the fact is, there are no rules right now. So technically, a city council member could appoint someone that lives in Elk Grove or lives in Folsom or. There's just, there's no rules. You're an exception. You've been here a long time. You run a successful business. I have a lot of respect for you. And that's why I'm willing to offer the compromise to allow you to finish your term because I know that your heart's in the right place. And I do think that there are things you could offer the planning commission. But to just move forward with no solution, I think is the wrong answer.
Well, I just believe if anybody lives in a sphere and has a Galt address, they should be able to do whatever they want. Because we do, we have to, we get charged. The nine and a quarter this one too. We don't get to vote on it. We have to pay it. And we buy stuff in Galt every day. So anybody in the sphere, there's some good people out there and out of the sphere of influence in Galt and the community. And I think some of them looking in. Sometimes you need to look in to kind of evaluate things. I really truly believe in my heart. And even if I'm not on the thing, I really truly believe in my heart that there's good people out there that do just as good a job or better than the people that serve them. And that's just, that's just how I feel. So, thank you. I just wanted to say it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank we have one other speaker. Please go ahead and time it.
Good evening, Mayor Shelton, council members. I think the compromise that was offered by the city attorney, my name, by the way, is Jeff Hood, 868 Bernal Road in Galt.
You're not here tonight as an official spokesman for the city of Lodi.
No, I am a resident of Galt. I live within the city.
Resigned here. Oh, okay.
Actually, live within the city limits. I think that the compromise offered by the city attorney is a really good one. I was coming down here, I'm actually going to speak on another item, but this was something that concerned me, but I think the compromise is appropriate. I think under the government code, there's only three municipal agencies that have judicial legislative authority. And that would be the city council, the redevelopment agency and the planning commission. So the planning commission has much broader powers under state law than do other committees and commissions within the city. And because of that, they have the right to approve use permits and have far greater input over the future of the city than do other committees and commissions. But I think it's important that the commission members reside within the city limits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments by council?
We have one other.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Didn't see you guys were passing there. Sorry.
Well, my name is Leo Van Warmerdam and I reside on the outside the sphere of influence. And correct me if I'm wrong, but does the planning commission, does it have, what power does it have? All it's doing is giving a recommendation to the council. Is that correct or no?
Yes, they're an advisor. Go ahead, Kurt. You can, can you explain that?
They have powers to the extent that they can approve use permits, parcel maps, subdivision maps. They make recommendations on legislative acts such as rezones, general plan amendments and the environmental studies that go along with those same types of activities.
But they do take action outside the city council.
Well, and this is a recommendation, but you know, maybe that there could be a position that could be created on the planning commission as an advisory or something like that. Because as a large landowner, family landowner, just like Jimmy is, there are a lot of decisions that the city council makes that we have no say on. Measure R was a good one, you know, and not only that, but we're getting all your guys' traffic, you know, that has to go around all of our equipment. We get the crime. We get the guys that come out to the city, to the outside the city limits to race their cars. We get people that move in and they think that everything, you know, north of the city, that they can ride their quads and motorcycles on and you know, we're having to run them out. Besides that, there's people that are, I'm not sure if they're from Galt, but somebody's dumping their trash on our roads, you know. So I think it's, I think it's just, I know that the council can make this decision, but I would really like you to consider that maybe is there some kind of an advisory position that can be on the planning commission that maybe doesn't have the power of a planning commissioner, but yet can still advise to the planning department. So without further ado, I mean, we've been here for 30, 40 years also and you know, I was on a committee that was real instrumental in getting the school board, the school bond passed out there for the new high school. And you know, our heart's in it. And I think that, I would just like to see the city compassionate to the people that are on the outside of the state limit because, you know, we may need each other someday and it would be great if it was a working relationship.
Leo, before you leave, I'd also like to point out that whenever we have fundraisers for the youth or for different things, we go to the people like, I know you've helped and Jim has too in putting on fundraisers for the kids to raise scholarship money and everything. So yeah, I think you're a very important part of the community. I don't think the community stops at the city limits. The community goes much further than that. And I just wanted to express my feelings about you and your family.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clary, have a comment or?
Yeah, just some thoughts. I don't agree with the proposal Andrew's come up with, but I do agree that there ought to probably be some some better definition and clarity, just as a couple of us have been appointed to work on clarifying just some of the council procedures and things so that there's clarity in that. So I support that concept. To the issue specifically of outside the city limits, let alone the sphere of influence, I don't support that. And I think at the last meeting, I used someone many of us know who we lost, Al Luna, who lives somewhere in the area of 500 feet outside the city on Twin Cities Road. Local business owner, rotarian. As you said, fundraising, I think that poor gentleman was on everybody's list and he was nice enough to write a check every time someone asked him. But it doesn't stop with him. There are so many people I can think of who are such an important part of our community and our city. As long as I've lived here, I've never thought of Galt as ending at the yellow line on Twin Cities Road to the north or any of the other yellow lines, east, west and south. Our children come from another county. We have kids in our schools from San Martin County. They aren't just in our city. They aren't even in our county. But they're part of our community and part of our city. The city manager currently lives in our city, but it's not required. The one before him didn't. And he's running the whole city. We don't even require that of him. I don't know that we require that he's a registered voter or not, and I don't think we monitor it. So the history of our city, the McFarlands who helped found this town, their property's still five miles out of town or something, but I think we would always say the McFarlands have been a part of our city and our community. David Herberger, who owns the only local newspaper, he doesn't live in our city, but I would have no problem with him sitting on the planning commission. I think he's probably a very good person, well informed. He's been on a number of the local nonprofit boards for years. Like I say, has the local paper, supports the high school. I mean, it goes on and on, rotarian. Rotarian. You know, we could think of a number of them. Mr. Palladini, five, I happen to be fourth generation Californian, but not in this town. So five generations in a single town, that's a heck of a commitment to a community. And given the businesses he's in, although I suppose he could move off the property and live in the city, but it's probably likely that his family will reside out on the property at the dairy for some while. Ray Coop, who's my next door neighbor, I think was one of the first in his family that I know of at least to live in the city limits, because their dairy's just outside the city limits and let the Coops have been a part of this community forever. So, I mean, I could go on and on with all those people that I think are part of our city, and I would have no problem being on our planning commission. You're building a house out in the county?
I am.
When you move out to the county, I'd still have you on the city's planning commission. I think you would have all the qualifications we would want. So what I would say is, I'm okay with some guidelines. I would say even I could support not more than two people would be outside the city limit, something like that. So we would always have the influence of one or two, not as advisory, as actual city members. So again, I support firming up the definition. I just wouldn't go as far as the recommendation. I wouldn't even do the whether you're a registered voter or not.
Well, since you brought that up at the last meeting, I called one of the cities that has that as a requirement. And the reason that they do that is because you would have a landowner that would purchase a piece of property in town, not live there. They just, they, they use that as determining what is the permanent residence of an individual that might own three or four different properties. That's why they do the registered voter.
Probably same case at the city council. I mean, ever since I've been on the council, no one's ever asked me, do I still live at the same address and am I still a registered voter? I do live at the same address, and I am, but I don't file, I file a lot of forms every year. I never file that, do I?
When you have to run for election.
Yeah.
Just every, every four years.
To put things into perspective, you hear a lot of us talk about the, the effects that some of these five acre ranchettes have had on our community, the traffic that they put on our interchanges. Those are things that are approved by the county of Sacramento. They go through like the CPAC from the county of Sacramento, their planning commission. They're branches of their planning commission. You or I, correct me if I'm wrong, can't sit on that planning commission because we live in an, in an incorporated city. We're not eligible to sit on the planning commission that is approving ranchette properties a stone's throw away from our city limits. So the county has already figured out that it's in their best interest to make sure that people that have a vested interest in the county of Sacramento are the ones that are making the decisions. I think it's time that the city of Galt woke up and came to the same conclusion.
And I respect that opinion, it's just I have a different one. These, these people are my city. These people are my community, and I, I propose tonight, we don't support what's proposed. I am willing to look at language that would say not more than two people should live outside the city limits or something like that. And they can't get on that commission if one of us doesn't put them there. So the voters have already decided that each of us will appoint one person for whom we're responsible, that we believe they are a custodian of our city's best interest. I'm sure each of us take that seriously when we make our appointment, and then we make our appointment. But the people I've named, and I could name Ron Jacobson, I think he lives in his property just outside the city limit.
Yeah.
Right? So he's 50 feet outside the city limit. I'd put Ron Jacobson on our planning commission any time. So anyway, I, I can't support tonight's motion. I, as I say, I'd be glad to support some revision to give it better clarity, and I think I'd be comfortable with the not more than two concept.
I like that idea, too. And I would just add that we, we do have a history of others serving on the planning commission that didn't live within the city limits or within the sphere of influence. Ron Dameron, wonderful gentleman. He served on the planning commission. He's given so much to this community. Bob Ellis, actually lives out in the Campo, and he was very active on the planning commission. Frank Ludi, Don's husband, also served on the planning commission. So we have a history of, of people that haven't lived within the city limits and have done a good job. I also like the idea of maybe defining the requirements a little more, but I don't want to exclude these people that just because they live outside the sign that says Galt as being part of the community. We would be the ones that would be losing. And the other thing, excuse me, I'm having a hard time talking. Part of the planning commission, part of the city council's responsibility is to plan for the future. The future isn't always going to stop at the city limits. I mean, right now, we're just doing a general plan that looks past the city limits. And I think we would be doing a disservice if we didn't want the input from those people. And that's always going to be the way it is, well, for quite a while, that we will be looking to expand or to control or to be part of the land that's beyond our city limits. And to not include those people in the planning would be, in my, in my mind, a disservice. So I would agree that I could support some, some refining of this ordinance, but I, I couldn't support eliminating someone because they live outside a sign that says City of Galt.
Okay. I guess it's my turn.
Andrew, I want to thank you for bringing this to the agenda, because it, what it did, it had all of us review it, and there are no guidelines. And I don't necessarily agree with what your proposal is, but I'd like to offer up a couple of things. On the eligibility, basically, these are my thoughts, and this is part of my compromise. The planning commissioners' eligibility, really, I believe that this should be a combination, and, and I'm going to explain a couple of things, and I'm going to give a recommendation. Should be, if any of us remember the old Galt Fire Protection District, the guidelines and, and the district, and like the elementary school. I know that I tried to get information, what the guidelines were for the school, the high school and, and the elementary, and I wasn't getting any headway. And then I'm not trying to throw Liz under the bus here, but I asked her to try to find out for me, and couldn't really get it distinguished exactly where they are, because I guess they're in the midst of doing, you know, some changes. But I think one of the things that we could probably agree upon when I talk about that is, is the Sacramento County side along Dry Creek. I mean, I think we can at least all agree with that. Well, anyway, I can. And hopefully, hopefully, sorry, I'm not trying to sway anyone. But then when you get down here towards outside of town, if you look at part of that district line, and it actually came across at where about Dustin is, and it changes to Alta Mesa. And if you follow that up, I thought we had a map here, and, because I was going to use, you know, a laser so we could kind of look at it, but that's more the city. So, but if you follow that up to Cherokee and take Cherokee across, and there are some lines that go across all the way to Valanson and Arnold Road, and if you follow Arnold Road all the way to 99, and if you just go right over into the Consumedness Preserve, and follow that preserve all the way down around where Twin Cities and it crosses, around where McFarland Ranch is, and Orr Road, and where it Orr changes, then it goes to Cost, if you just went about, it's about 400 yards, and you went back into Dry Creek. For me, that's a good option, because that keeps people here. It keeps it not necessarily what, what Andrew was asking for and what you were asking for is complete city. But I'm also open to not necessarily all of the commissioners being outside, so if we can come to some kind of compromise. You know, we put together a committee to review the bylaws and the, part of the ordinances and everything, and I think maybe you guys met, but my recommendation is, would be partly is to send this back. Okay? Since we've kind of opened this up, and the other thing I noticed was, number two, was that the alternate commissioner, it doesn't really say how long you can be on the committee. It basically just says something to the effect, it says, "The alternate shall be appointed by the council as a whole and shall serve at the pleasure of the city council." Well, you already know that on the safety committee, I mean, and we, we all decided we'd do that. I believe if we have any committee people, any commissioners that are alternates, they're really, they should be for two years, not for four. I mean, we're changing people about every two years anyway. But those are my thoughts. And I'm not really prepared to make this into a motion. I would recommend that it go back to committee, and that way you have our city attorney and Liz, and you guys bring it back in two weeks. But this right here, I would like to have this all spelled out and, you know, provide you guys with a copy of what my proposal was. Now, you can either tell me, thanks a lot, mayor, and vote it down, or you can say that's acceptable.
No, we'll take a look at that.
But I thank you for, seriously, never even thought about it, because like, I think you had made a comment, well, we could ask somebody from Folsom. I mean, I don't think we would, but, but you could have. That's true, we could have. Yeah.
I'm, I'm interested to hear what Vice Mayor Payne and Councilmember Claire have to say with, with those boundary lines, because in both of your comments, you referred to the fact that you didn't want it to stop at the Galt city limits, and if we went to the San Joaquin County line, that's exactly what you would be doing, so.
To be honest, I wasn't following his boundaries pretty well.
Well, I know without that map, because I thought there was one up there.
But I, I'm open to look at anything that's presented by any of our council members, especially our mayor. So I hope that answered your question.
Yes. You want us to look at those? It sounded like some of the fire boundaries, from what I remember of them, or close to it. And I know.
Over 50% of them.
Yeah, I know some of those are also either exactly or about the high school boundaries, so I think those would be good ones to look at. I, I hate to exclude our Harold family, because they've been nice enough to ask me for four years to come out and judge their parade, and they usually throw candy at me, and so I don't want to get on their bad side either.
Yeah, judge it wrong.
But I'll make a motion if you want. I'll move that this be remanded, if it will, or to the committee that's working on the council procedures and stuff, and we'll come back in two weeks and try and come up with a, oop, I'm getting a, oh, because it's coming back as an ordinance.
I think the direction is fine. I think the two week might be an issue.
Right.
I think our next meeting's before the June 2nd meeting.
Right.
So maybe if we can come back by June.
Is that all right?
So are you both still interested in looking at having the two planning commissioners?
Yeah, not more than two.
Would you be okay with two people out of five seats on the planning commission being people that don't even live in the city of Galt?
Well, I'm not saying they are required to be. I'm saying that there wouldn't be any more than.
How would you decide which two council members would take priority if they're selecting?
First, if they're already filled, then a third person can't install one.
But is that fair to the council member who's trying to select the candidate they think is best? I mean, I just don't know, you just can't have it both ways.
Life's not fair. I've lived it longer than I know that.
It can be balanced.
I don't see that there's a problem. I mean, we've, we've been using this for some time, and it hasn't, hasn't come up as a problem at all. It couldn't, Andrew. But I think you mentioned that we have been elected by the people, and you know, maybe I wouldn't agree with your selection on the committee, but I would certainly feel like as an elected official, you would do the best you could for, for the city, for the citizens. And I would, you know, I would trust your judgment, and I would hope you would feel the same about your fellow council members. Now, it doesn't mean that you have to have two councils, or two planning commissioners on every commission living outside the city. It's just, it, it would be acceptable, but no more than two or whatever, whatever we came up with. It's not a requirement that you have two from outside the city. Don, I was thinking that's kind of where you were going, that you had to pick.
What I'm saying, you have two people, but if you're going to open it to one, you've got to leave it open to everybody.
Absolutely.
You just can't say that because you're new on the council, well, we're not going to let you because I've already taken that spot.
Yeah.
You, you can't do it that way. At the same time, you've got to have some boundaries.
It's, it's just like we have appointments where there's a person who represents the business industry, and another one represents something else. And when it's filled, it's filled. County has that, the state has that. There's all kinds of boards, but when that position's filled, until that seat opens up, nobody else can appoint a representative for that group of people, so. Well, let me see if we can make a motion.
You've had a motion.
Yeah. I move that this be sent to the committee working on the rules and policies. It'll be brought back at the appropriate time in June after the first meeting we're having, which is on what date?
June 2nd?
June 2nd.
What's that?
That work. That'd be my motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Nope.
Aye. Write our calendar.
Okay. First item, the treasurer's report for the period ending March 2009.
Thank you. Yes, I live in the city. Mr. Mayor, city council members, in front of you this evening, you have the treasurer's report for March 2009. There's just three things I just want to mention on this. And we talked about, and I've been preaching this for, for a very, very long time, and that is how we, the city invests its money locally. And currently, we have about seven and a half million dollars invested in local banks, more specifically in Farmers and Merchants Bank. I also want to, want to mention that the yield on our portfolio for the month of March was 2.09%, which I will also tell you that that is heading, heading south. It will, it will be below 2%. I mean, that's just the way the interest rates are, and the city's not, certainly not immune to, to, to the interest rates that are going on in today's world. Lastly, I just want to mention that for the first three quarters in the fiscal year, the city has earned a little bit over a million dollars. It's actually 1.23 million dollars in the first three quarters of the fiscal year, so which is, that's pretty good, but that's definitely lower than in previous years, and that's because, due to the lower, lower interest rates. So with that, I ask that you approve the treasurer's report. If I can answer any questions, I will, but otherwise, approve the treasurer's report as presented, please.
Any comments or questions from council?
Nope. I'll move staff's recommendation, accept the report.
Motion's been made and seconded. No further discussion. Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Sure, yes, to step down.
Second item on the, on the agenda here is, is I will ask for your approval of the investment policy for the year, fiscal year 2009, 2010. By law, once a year, this investment policy must be presented in a public meeting to, in this case, the city council, the governing body. And, and what this investment policy does, it gives the city council the authority to, to direct all investments to the city treasurer for the period of one year. So in essence, you're giving me permission to continue the investments for the fiscal year 2009, 2010. Also, in this 14-page document, it also states what the allowable investments are according to California Government Code, and what are, you know, different limitations there are within the certain investments. As you can tell from the previous report you just approved, we have a good investment strategy. It's safe, it works, it's, you know, we have, of course, a checking account, it's State of California late funds. We have CDs, both locally and non-local CDs, and also government agencies. Those have worked since I've been treasurer, and, you know, I don't plan to change it. So with that, and I will, I will tell you one other thing. There, there were no corrections or additions to the, to this investment policy as to in previous years. So this is, this is the same as it was last year. I ask for the council approval.
Any further comments?
I have one.
Sure.
I just wanted to point out to reassure the public that the objectives, in case you didn't read this, are set out that safety is our number one consideration when we are making our investments. That's followed by liquidity and then return on investment. And I think that our city treasurer's going to And I think that our city treasurer's done a very good job, but I did want people out there to know what our priority is, and that is safety, so we don't lose money.
We don't take a risk on our money, I will tell you that. In, in the years I've been treasurer, that's, we've not, we have never lost a dime.
Hope you will continue to be able to say that.
And how long have you been doing that?
Yeah, oh, about nineteen years now.
See, I'll, all right. With that, I'll move, we accept the proposed City of Galt investment policy for the fiscal year 2009, 2010, as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Nope. Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Four. Oh. Through your voice way over there. Okay. Okay. Next item? City manager's office?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This item is the city website domain name. Council, recall at the last council meeting, we made a presentation about the new website look and design to the city's website. Um, happy to report we've had a lot of hits, a lot of interest, a lot of people, a lot of compliments on the website. Um, but at the meeting, Councilman Meredith asked staff to bring back some options as far as different domain names that the city council might be interested in changing. The current website is www.ci.galt.ca.us. It was a, it's a similar, it was a similar structure for a lot of other cities throughout the state. It's actually a nationwide kind of standard, however, over the past several years, a lot of cities, including a lot of the ones around us, have deviated from that, and now there's all kinds of different things. I provided the council with a list of, of other, basically, um, all cities in the state of California, which is compiled on the League California Cities website, and out of, I mean, it was four hundred and ninety something websites, I mean, about a third of them use the same construct that we do, the other ones are all over the place. They use, uh, um, different extensions from dot com, dot gov, dot net, dot US, I mean, it's all, really all over the board, so there's not really a rhyme or reason as far as the way cities are naming their websites anymore, it's really what the city council and the community is, is most comfortable with. Um, we did do a little bit of research to find out which website options were available for purchase, if, should the city council be interested in switching. Uh, the cost of our current website is free, that, that, that domain name is free, all the options that I have listed, if it ends in anything but dot gov, it's ten dollars a year, if it's dot gov, then it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. The options that are currently available right now include CityofGalt.gov, CityofGalt.us, Galt.gov, GaltCA.net, GaltCA.us, GaltCity.org, GaltCity.gov, and GaltGov.com. There may be other options that the council might be interested in, and we can look those up and let you know if those are available as well. Our IT guy is here, and he can do a quick search, so we could even do it right here in the meeting if there's other options the council's interested in. There are a number of other options that are currently owned by individuals or companies, so they're not readily available for purchase, but if the council's interested in any of these, then we could make contact and see if we can negotiate and acquire those sites. The cost of those would be unknown at this time, depending on what the, the individuals or companies would demand, but if the council's interested in one of these, we could certainly, um, uh, begin the process of trying to acquire those sites. These include the following website addresses: CityofGalt.com, CityofGalt.net, CityofGalt.org, GaltCity.com, Galt.org, Galt.com, Galt.us, and Galt.net. Um, there are a few things that the council should consider when switching over the website, there, there will be some work involved with switching over our, our networks and other usernames and passwords and so forth. The biggest change or impact to, to, to most of the staff, as well as the council, would be the switch of, of web email addresses. As you know, each of your email address ends with the at ci.galt.ca.us, so if we change, that would change as well. Um, any printed material that you might have, business cards, letterhead, those would need to be switched over as well. Uh, we do have an alternative or an option, since we can continue to own the ci.galt.ca.us domain name, we can have both of them running simultaneously, and over time, we can switch those, uh, the printed materials out, so there wouldn't be necessarily a large upfront cost. Essentially, what would happen, if somebody typed in the old, your old e-mail addresses, it would just be forwarded to your new one. And same thing with the website, if somebody went to the old website address, it would redirect them to the new website address, so it would avoid some of that confusion. Um, in reality, most people use Google or Yahoo or one of the search engines to find a city website, so, you know, whatever you do or don't do, if you want to change or to keep it the same, people are going to be able to find the site, really, one way or, or another, just a matter of preference. Um, the only thing, in my opinion, that's annoying, but the current one, is when you're giving somebody your email address, spit out the long name is kind of annoying, but other than that, it seems to work okay, but staff is certainly willing to entertain options that the council might be interested in looking at.
What do you suppose the cost might be to purchase one like, I mean, I like the Galt.org, I like you to keep it simple, easy to find, and that tends to be, you know, easier for people to remember. So, it, not that I want to spend any money, but what do you think the cost could be?
It depends. I mean, some, some people buy these sites with the intent on selling them for a large amount of money at some point in the future.
Right.
And there are sites that have gone for tens of thousands of dollars. Um, I don't imagine that, that these would go for that amount, um, but I have no idea. We haven't talked to any of them, so we don't know, it could be anywhere from a hundred dollars to, you know, thousands of dollars.
Uh, comments from council?
I, you kind of touched on where I was saying, I wouldn't give up the one we've got, one, because it is an outlawed printed material. In my case, it's on my favorites, so I, I just click there and it goes there. I don't think about what the whole address says, once you've gone there once. And as you said, I tried it on a couple of search engines, and if you put in Galt, California, nothing else, you don't even have to put in the word city, just Galt, California, you will find our website on at least everything I looked on. So I, I think that's pretty, but I wouldn't be opposed to, and hopefully Andrew will come in, because I think he's the one who raised this, if he had another name he was interested in that would redirect, I'm not opposed to that, but I wouldn't give up the one we've got. Um, I just think it's, it's locked in to too many places that I don't, I don't think we'd gain, but-
Sure.
And I kind of like, I mean, every once in a while, you put in something and you know you're in Germany or Australia, I mean, the nomenclature tells you something about where you are. Our nomenclature clearly tells you where we are, you're not just in the United States, but you're in the state of California, so there's a, a part of that, but, uh, if one of the others, I kind of like the dot gov, since we are a government agency, but I, I wouldn't spend too much money, but if Andrew had a name he was particularly hoping we could use that would redirect us to the same website that we're seeing, I have no problem with that at all. I think Jeff wanted to speak on this, though. Making him stand up.
Go ahead, Jeff, we're going to have to make you pull out cards.
Jeff had, for now, wrote, "I went on GoDaddy today and I bought all those domain names that you had on-"
No.
No, actually, yeah-
Can't talk rocks, so I can negotiate with you then.
Well, I, I would just recommend the dot gov, um, address, because it gives a lot of credibility to your website, uh, with that. But the General Services Administration regulates the dot gov addresses, I think if you go to dot gov, dot gov, spell it out, um, it lists some of the requirements. And one of them, uh, with the dot gov, uh, domain name is you cannot put any advertising on your webpage, uh, so that would be a consideration. Uh, I know City of Stockton had, uh, some advertising on their webpage, and they pretty much found it's not worth the, the effort, it takes a lot of staff time for very little return. And, um, uh, and one of the naming conventions they, they, uh, they have now with the GSA is if you're going to have a dot gov URL for a city, they like to have the city name spelled out completely, and then hyphen CA for California, so that's their preference, is be Galt hyphen CA.gov. Uh, I mean, that would be the GSA's preference, if you want to go with a dot gov, but certainly, uh, you know, you could go with any other, but the dot gov gives a lot of credibility to the website. And congratulations on Vision Internets, uh, excuse me, they did a great job.
Yeah, thanks.
What name would you like?
Does it really matter what I think? Oh, you don't need to be that way, Andrew.
Um, we, I, I like the, I like the Galt.org, I like that.
Like I said, if we can get that, but keep our original site, and they both show you the same thing when you log on, that's fine with me.
Again, the Galt.org is not currently available, so we'd have to contact the current owner. Is there a price limit or a second choice if this is not available, or if the owner says, "I'm not interested in selling that domain"? Is there a alter, alternate?
Find out what, what they're looking, and then we'll talk about it.
Do you want us to bring it back?
I think it would be a bad idea, on a recorded TV live streaming, to tell the person who owns it what our, huh, our top dollar is, so I have a feeling his price will be just about, no, I would just find out how much they want to sell it for, and if the guy tells you it's five thousand dollars, I'm, I'm not interested, but, who knows?
Okay. So, what's your direction, council?
I'm fine with just finding out how much they want for.
Bring it back.
Works for me.
I'm okay with that.
For staff, yeah?
Yep. We'll make contact and-
Look into it, okay.
See if they're interested in selling.
Okay. So, what, you think you can bring it back in a couple of weeks, or?
Um, yeah.
See if they'd be willing to trade for a stint on the planning commission.
Well, I'm happy with the way it is, but I'm not a com- much of a computer person, you guys are, so I'm flexible, you know?
Um, Matt just had a suggestion, as far as if there's an alternate that you're interested in, that are currently available, we could purchase that now and then lock it up, otherwise, people are watching this, they could, like Mr. Hood said, could go out and purchase them and-
Oh, he already did. He's rushing home right now.
He's on a satellite phone.
The one, the one that's currently available that's most similar to the one that was recommended is Galt, instead of Galt.org, it's Galt.gov?
All right.
Yeah, I like that one, too.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jason, do you see any, uh, problem with what, uh, Jeff mentioned? If you have dot gov, you can't have any kind of-
Advertising.
Advertising?
Don't do any advertising.
Think that'll be an issue?
And I don't see us doing advertising in the future.
It's usually committees and commissions, anyway.
Our, our, uh, free market?
No, it's city-owned and operated, it would be, somebody pays us to put stuff up on our website.
Okay.
Okay. And you, did you feel that you could bring it back in the next council meeting?
Um, we'll attempt to, I mean, yeah. Make, the next council meeting, we have to have it done by this Friday, so sometimes that doesn't give us a lot of time, but we'll-
Oh.
We'll make, we'll make every effort to bring it back the next meeting.
Or just give us an update? Okay. Next item?
Sphere of Influence Amendment, consistent with the Galt General Plan 2009 and Budget Appropriation to Initiate Application Processing.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before you tonight is requesting approval of the resolution which would authorize city manager his designate to petition for an amendment to the city of Galt's sphere of influence, as, as well as authorize an appropriation as indicated by city clerk. Um, the report, um, if you have before you, um, and I have an attached map, as part of the general plan update process, we identified approximately, a little over a thousand acres north of Twin Cities Road that would be added to the city's sphere of influence, have identified land uses for that area. At the same time, uh, we deleted, um, approximately sixteen, a little over sixteen hundred acres on the west side of the city, between Christensen and, and Sargent. Um, and that was due to a number of reasons, but principally, it's been subdivided into two and five acre parcels, doesn't lend itself towards urbanization, and that was the process and, and the direction as part of the general plan update. I'm here before you tonight to get this authorization for two reasons. One, to implement policies of the general plan as it relates to future growth and development in accommodating a revised and updated, uh, amended sphere of influence, but more importantly today, is that we get an application on record, uh, for purposes of addressing environmental issues associated with the habitat conservation plans being prepared for South County. Um, the lands that are identified, uh, in our sphere of influence expansion north of Twin Cities are not designated for urbanization under the HCP. So as part of the HCP process and their environmental documentation, they would then evaluate potential urbanization of that area, because it would be part of a contemplated SOI boundary. If the boundary is not complete, even at the time of, of the HC, HCP's completion, um, at least we would be on record and that analysis would be taken, because it is a likely project under the definition of CEQA. So, that's really the primary motivation, and it's kind of a timely matter, we're moving through, uh, chapters on the HCP relatively quickly. Uh, I don't know whether, where that process is going to end, but everybody is moving in that direction to complete it, so, uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, we've got everything done that we need to have done, so that we don't have any problems, uh, with the HCP in the future. What I, the alternative is, if we don't do this, we would have to take, undertake an independent, uh, uh, amendment process with the HCP, and we would end up paying for the environmental, uh, costs, uh, for preparation of documentation. So, I think it's timely, it, it's cost, cost effective for the city to do it now. And, uh, I concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
Any comments from council?
Is it, this is a necessary step that we need to do?
This, this.
I've got a question, sir.
I know, but I was looking to the right, and I was getting ready to-
I had a, uh, I had a resident call and ask, I think they were confused about what we were actually voting on tonight in regards to the SOI amendment.
Sure.
There was apparently, uh, some conversation out in the community that the Delta Greens Project had approached the city and asked to be a Phase B of our amendment to our SOI. Is that something that the Delta Greens owners have proposed to the city and that we're moving forward with, or is that just something that's completely off the table?
There was some discussion, um, it is not part of this application, it's not recommended to be part of this application. This purely implements the general plan, um, and I'm following that policy direction. The council gave other policy direction to the owners of those lands, and there's a process set forth, independent of this process.
Okay, so there's no way that the two can be tied together?
No, this is a separate application.
Fantastic.
Any further comments or discussion?
No, move staff's recommendation?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. No further comments. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Next item, Culture and Recreation Department.
Hey, before we get into the Culture and Recreation, uh, boys, how long will this take, do you think, for your? Okay, just want to verify, I'm just on a time frame tonight.
Yeah, 'cause he needs to leave in a little bit.
So, I just wanted to see how long it would take, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, I have suspicions that it will take a little longer than that, because I have quite a few questions, so.
Okay.
I think the reason that, by, Councilmember Haynes is, uh, bringing this up, he has an item under his comments tonight, that if we don't do it now, he's not going to be able to do it, because he's going to have to leave.
So, if that's the case, I'd like to, under the, regarding the rent stabilization, if you don't mind, I'd like to just move that up.
Right.
It's just a brief discussion.
No, I, I would prefer that you go ahead and do that.
Would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay.
That's okay, because he's got to leave in just a few minutes. Okay.
All right, do we need to open the floor for comment or anything?
You didn't have fireworks planned right now, did you?
So?
Okay.
All right. I brought this up, and I put this on the agenda, uh, I've been meeting, as well as, uh, Councilman, uh, Meredith, with some of the mobile home, uh, park owners and discussing some of the issues of, uh, trying to get some sort of, uh, uh, rent stabilization in place to deal with the increasing rents sometimes that are being imposed on some, uh, some, uh, mobile home park residents. And even though we're still meeting ongoingly, and I hope that we're going to continue to meet, is that, I want to make sure that we get our options out there as we move forward, or at least come to some sort of, if we don't come to some sort of reasonable agreement, at least we will have, uh, our options in front of us. All I want to do is ask staff, if it's okay with the council, is to do a study, uh, go out and do a cost study, is that what it would actually cost to do, uh, a rent stabilization study itself, just to get some estimates, so that we have that on hand as we move forward. That's it.
Do you need a statement of work for people to quote on or how?
Well, my understanding, these are pretty, the way they're designed, they're all, they're like a contract that they all read out pretty much the same. I don't have any specifics, but if we can get some estimates and if there are some variations in the cost as a result of the depth of study, maybe they could also provide that to us as well.
Well, I would like to ask the attorney a question then. Is it the elected officials or the cities on their behalf, or is it our responsibility to do that? Or is it the individual mobile home park or apartment complex?
I'm sorry, mayor, I don't know if I understand-
Well, he's asking for us to, for the city to do a study. I don't know, is that something that we would normally do? I've got some concerns with that.
I think what I understand Councilmember Haynes is asking is that if the city were at some future point to undertake or consider a rent stabilization ordinance, the prerequisite is to do a market study on the amount of the rents within the community being charged by those mobile homes. And I think what is being asked is for staff to do some investigation as to what that study might cost. Is that?
That's exactly it. Thank you.
Okay, I thought you were asking for a-
No, no, I just wanted, yeah, no, Steve ordered it much better than I did, but just-
That's why I asked you.
No, no, that's fine. But, you know, it's pretty dry and cut and if staff could just give us some numbers so that we have that available.
The issue that staff would have is, is we can just call and say, you know, how much would it do, it'd take to do a rent study? But we need a scope of work as to what it is that we're requiring and what magnitude it is. I mean, if you just want to run one and say, you'll give us, you know, we can get a ballpark number, but until you have a scope of work, they'll probably highball their number till they know exactly what it is you want them to do.
I'd go back and check Ted because I think when Andrew Morris was representing the city, I think he had begun to prepare a scope of work. We might still have that on hand. Because I think this discussion started when he was, he was here and we were in the process of hiring Steve as the new city attorney.
Does anyone have some ballpark, those tis, as a five thousand, twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand?
What I might be able to do is ask another city who went through this and went through potential litigation and find out if there was a study done and about what the range was and who the individuals were, and I think I can probably get that info. But I'll make contact tomorrow and see if they've got any information.
Okay.
And we can check and see with Andrew Morris.
I think it's time that we just, we made a commitment to this and actually did an RFP, actually put this out as a formal proposal instead of just calling around and asking. It just, it seems to me from some of the latest correspondence with the park owners, some of them just aren't interested in moving this forward. And it seems like we've got to a point now where one side's delaying and delaying and delaying and just hoping that this goes away.
But are you asking that the city would do a RFP and pay for the study?
If that's what council chooses, yes. If our intent is to adopt this ordinance, you know, there are financial obligations that we have to take on. We can't just adopt the ordinance and not do the study. Andrew made that out pretty clearly for us before. This is the beginning part of adopting the policy.
I thought it was a little bit backwards. I thought that the study was supposed to be done to determine whether or not you needed an ordinance to find out whether or not they were within the market. Isn't the ordinance to protect it? And before you can do that, you have to determine whether or not you're out of market?
That's what I just described. You have to do the study first before you determine whether or not you can even adopt the ordinance. So, that's why if we have an intent to possibly do this, we need to do the study. We need to stop tiptoeing around it and just do the study.
Why don't we find out what the likelihood of the cost is and then we'll go from there?
You have direction?
Is that okay?
Yep.
Now, we are back to-
Galt Parks Draft Master Plan Update.
Good evening. And before I turn it over to Kate Kirsch, the city's consultant on this project, I'd just like to acknowledge and thank the members of the Ad hoc Master Plan Update Committee, those being John Pride, Richard Salton, Councilmember Don Hay, Vice Mayor Barbara Payne, Alfredo Rodriguez, Jose Gonzalez, Leslie Esparza, Matthew Shelton, Sherry Daly, and also Veronica Cardoni as an alternate. And before you, tonight is a draft copy of the Park Master Plan. It's been over a year in the process and this is a tool for the city, a plan. Nothing is set in concrete, so your input would be appreciated tonight. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Kate Kirsch.
All right. I didn't really-
That's who you're supposed to be talking to.
Bert, can you see from up there all right? All right.
Is there-
Get your popcorn.
How does the, is it going to, okay, great, thank you. Thank you very much. Well, good evening, Mayor Shelton and council members and public who remained here this evening. As boys pointed out, the purpose of my presentation here tonight is to give you an update on the Galt Parks Master Plan. We have gone through a long process to prepare the master plan at this point and I'll give you a little summary of what that process has been with respect to public participation. I'm also going to review the, at a high scale, the major recommendations within the master plan and have some discussion about the project schedule as it moves forward here. So, this evening we are basically at task nine. We're just about finished with the project here. We've gone through a fairly involved process of looking at the facilities that the city currently has, getting input from the community through a number of various events and activities, establishing criteria for what kinds of services and facilities the city would like to offer and as compared to what you currently offer. Also did some analysis about preferences within the community and came up with specific financing issues and where the funding would come from, what we think it's going to cost to implement a plan that gives you the level of facility and service that you want to have in the community. We did do an admin draft, two admin drafts actually of the master plan. First one going to staff and then following that going to an ad hoc committee, the members of which boys mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. And then we prepared draft master plan taking comments from that group. We have presented the draft master plan to the Parks and Recreation Commission a couple of weeks ago. It's also out on the city's public website, available for public review and comment and at city offices for people who may be interested in seeing it. In terms of the various outreach activities that we did, it was really quite an extensive amount of outreach. The ad hoc committee met four separate times, is kind of illustrated on this timeline, beginning in April of 2008 until their last ad hoc committee, which was in January. We also had a website going throughout the entire period of the project with agendas for meetings and different outcomes and activities for the meetings identified there. We had two community workshops. First one was in May of 2008 and then a second one occurred in August of 2008. We also did a couple of pretty exhaustive surveys. The first one, well, they ran simultaneously actually. The community phone survey was done for residents within the city of Galt. It was a statistically significant survey, so enough homes were contacted, enough calls were made to provide a plus or minus five percent certainty that the responses that we received were in fact reflective of the preferences of the community. We also did a written survey that was available both in paper form and on the web. I should say that both surveys were available in Spanish as well as English. And then, as I mentioned, the final public outreach opportunity was the Parks and Recreation Commission, which was just held last month in April, at which point the master plan was presented. Quick summary of some of those public review activities. What we actually did at the two community workshops, a number of exercises, participatory exercises that dealt with establishing what the vision for Galt Parks would be in the future. How citizens felt that available funds should be prioritized for various types of expenditures. We also had some exercises around what the different recreation trends are, what people think they're going to want to be doing in the future, what their preferences for programs and facilities were. We also developed concepts for three park sites, both the Haushelp site, the little annex next to Harvey Park, and then the Cost Road site. Again, these were just sort of exercises in eliciting from participants the types of facilities that they generally would like to see. They're not hard and fast plans for these park sites by any means before any development at those parks would be done. Obviously, there'd be community meetings and a specific design process for each of them. Of those three, it's likely that Harvey Park would be done first and then Cost Road. The Haushelp site, of course, is even outside of the sphere of influence of the city at this time, so that's something that is fairly far off in the future, given the financial situation. The phone surveys, I mentioned, we did enough calls and got enough surveys to have a plus or minus five percent margin of error. Again, bilingual, so that we were able to get input from all the people in the community. The written survey had two hundred and fifty-seven respondents and that survey actually allowed us to get a lot more detailed information about specific programs and specific parks that individuals visited and used. It was distributed through the library, both at the Parks and Recreation Department counter and at the Galt Festival Community Center, et cetera, and online as well. And I also mentioned already the ad hoc committee. There were nine members to that committee and we had four meetings throughout the process of the project at various critical points in the project development. The recommendations that I'm going to share with you here this evening, a lot of different inputs went into arriving at these recommendations and I'm not going to go over in a lot of detail what those various determinants were. But I will summarize them here for you to give you some idea of the breadth of information that we analyzed before coming up with these recommendations. I mentioned earlier, we did an in-depth inventory of the existing facilities and programs that the city has. So we sort of had a baseline. We knew what the level of service, the quality of the recreation product, if you will, is for the city of Galt. We also looked at demographic trends and what the projections for growth within the city would be. We looked at what is the level of service that the city wants to continue to offer to residents moving forward in time with respect to parks and facilities. And then we analyzed how are your existing parks measuring up against that level of service and is there any kind of a deficit that we need to try and address? Again, we had input from the ad hoc committee, staff, and the community through the workshops and surveys. And then we also did a relative prioritization of all the various needs that we saw out there for implementation, kind of taking into mind availability of funding and what the greatest demands, greatest needs were, that sort of thing. So it was a very multifaceted analysis process. I mentioned that we prioritize the various timeframes. We did develop a ten-year capital improvement program. If the projects recommended in the master plan were actually to be implemented, we made some projections about in what time period different projects should be implemented according to this scheme, A, B, C, D. Everything C and higher, I guess, would be within the ten-year CIP. And then there are a number of projects, or a few projects basically, that fell into the D category, greater than ten years, such as the Haushelp project. So first, I'd like to start with a quick overview of improvements to existing parks and facilities that were identified. This basically is, or most of this is, the current Parks and Recreation Department CIP that has been developed and identified already. Harvey Park Expansion I already talked about. Some renovations at the Littleton Center and Galt Market were also identified. There's a need for some additional play structures at some of the existing parks within the city so that we can meet a proposed standard of having play structures at every city park. Some security improvements involve putting security cameras at some of the existing parks that don't have them. And then also getting full compliance for Americans with Disabilities Act at the playground services at several parks that still need to have that done. There's a need to do an improvement to the pavement overlay at Galt Market. And then there's a couple of structures out at the sports complex that will need to be replaced or repaired in the next ten years and then further out. So, these are all projects that are oriented towards preserving the investment in facilities and structures that you already have. They're capital projects, but if you don't make those kinds of investments, then you're likely to have to spend more in the future to recover the damage, the postponed maintenance, if you will, on those types of facilities. We also looked at new park development. And in this category, obviously Walker Park is something that's been on the planning board for a while. There is a master plan that's already been developed for it and phases, Phase 1A, 1B, and later phases have been identified and costed out. Details of that, too, the details of that master plan and all those portions of that work are represented here in this first slide. There are recommended improvements at the Cost Road Park Site. It's about a twenty-acre park site and we were recommending that about twelve point five acres of it be designed for active use. The southerly portion of it is constrained by natural features and the Dry Creek drainage way there, so obviously some of that land is not really well-suited for active parkland. But it would have value as open space for passive recreation uses. We also recommended some, making sure that the city continue to require parkland dedication fees or fees in lieu as new residential developments come into the city so that you can maintain your current standard of five acres of active parkland for every thousand people, which is the standard the city currently has and what the general plan also calls for. While we didn't think that, it would be likely that the Haushelp property, the eighty-acre parcel, would actually undergo renovation within the ten-year CIP period. We did recommend that sometime in that period, towards the end of that time, some kind of a more exhaustive feasibility study and master plan be undertaken to really look at, at that point in time, what the needs of the community look like, what are the various regional recreation needs, and what are the recreation trends that might be appropriate in order to position the city for some future development out of that site, sometime greater than ten years out. And then also, we did identify an activity, it's not really a capital project, but it's a sort of direction to planning staff and park staff to work together to definitely identify where the park sites are going to be within the community as new developments come in. There are some recommended sites within the general plan, but the specific locations obviously would not be established until specific plans were done for those new developments. Open space and trails. Trails is one of the really popular amenities that people repeatedly said they wanted to have more access to within the community. So we have a specific set of recommendations related to providing that level of service. We recommended that there be a new standard that all parks and recreational open space have a certain level of trail improvement, specifically ADA accessible paved paths in all the active use parks. And that all the recreational open space areas at least have unpaved trails at a minimum. We also recommended that all of the parks have access either via Class 1 trail or Class 2 and sidewalk configuration. I think that's described a little bit further down below. But it's very much related to people being able to get to the parks and how they have access to them. We also recommended that the city add to their impact fees, not just for active park use, but also to be able to set aside five acres per thousand of recreational open space. This is a land standard that a lot of communities are now moving towards in the past ten years, especially as communities are beginning to develop. There's a real awareness that if this open space is not preserved now, prior to specific plans being developed, that you basically can't get that land back. And as the city becomes more densely developed, people want to have the ability to go to these undeveloped kind of natural area park spaces without having to get in their car and drive, you know, an hour or so away to kind of a preserve area outside of the community. Along those same lines, we recommended that the impact fee- Along those same lines, we recommended that the impact fee also be increased to make sure that we continue to be able to provide Class 1 trails at the rate of one quarter mile per one thousand people, and that the existing two point eight miles of Class 1 bike trails that are already identified in the bicycle transportation plan through Dedman Gulch and Dry Creek open space corridors be implemented sometime in the relatively near future, in the A to B timeframe of the CIP. And then I mentioned earlier that there was acre, eight acres of land at the Cost Road site that is really more suited towards recreational open space as opposed to active sports fields, and that also comes up in this open space set of recommendations for improvement, and that, of course, would include unpaved trails in that location as well. Few other items, the Emerald Vista Park Bridge. There's been a recommendation made that there should be a footbridge across Dedman Gulch to connect the park to the housing development neighborhoods to the south to enhance its usefulness and access. And then a couple of non-capital recommendations that speak to coordination with other planning efforts within the community, specifically coordination with the bicycle transportation plan, and then also working to identify another, at least five miles, of Class 1 trail alignments within the planning area in anticipation of future population growth. And again, our planning area goes all the way to the sphere of influence area. Mentioned earlier that we're recommending that all new neighborhood parks would be accessible for pedestrians or cyclists, either via Class 1 route or a Class 2 route with sidewalks. We're also recommending, again, and there's no cost associated with these measures, that the city actively pursue grants to provide interpretive signage in the open space areas, partly to increase awareness of the natural resources and, I think, to enhance the sense of stewardship of the community for these special places. And another stewardship-oriented recommendation is to really encourage the city to partner with local groups as well as with the schools on these trails and open space stewardship programs, recognizing the really important environmental education opportunities associated with that kind of a program. We do have a number of program-oriented recommendations, and again, these kinds of things would be our direction essentially to the recreation staff about where they would place their focus and their energies in terms of the types of programs that they're going to be putting in place in the future. Active adult programs are going to be increasingly important to the community as the baby boomer demographic will be comprising a larger portion of the population than it has in the past. And this group of people tends to have more disposable income, has more free time, is often very interested in more active types of recreation than have traditionally been made available to us, kind of a more classically senior citizen community. Also looking to increase the arts and cultural events. This is, again, something that came out pretty clearly in the surveys and the community workshops, that people are really interested in looking for more arts and cultural events in the community, and we're recommending specifically that the city try to partner with local arts and cultural groups so that this isn't something that the city has to take on all by itself, but that it's truly a coordinated effort with these other stakeholders in the community. Teen activities. Teen activities are also going to be very, very important. They already are important, and it's been challenging for the city to find the kinds of activities that kids want to participate in, so we are recommending that the city continue to focus on that. In particular, the underserved teens within the community, that being the population of kids who perhaps aren't already participating in after-school sports or on sports teams through the schools, that population particularly should be a focus for future programming. The Galt Market use and events, a lot of support for expanded weekend use of the Galt Market, so weekend shows, festivals, concerts, those kinds of things. One of the other things that the demographic analysis showed us is that there's going to continue to be increasing cultural diversity within the community, and so as programs are developed, the city needs to make sure that the types of programs they pick and the means by which those programs are publicized and implemented recognizes the needs of the diverse cultural backgrounds of the diverse people who will be in the city. There's also a set of recommendations that are administratively oriented and that don't have a capital cost, per se, associated with them. This level, this group of level of service standards that we're showing here is kind of summarizes some of the things I've already mentioned, that the city should adopt these level of service standards to help guide future improvements and also to provide a certain amount of direction as new development comes into the city, and people are putting together their specific plans, they'll have some idea about how they should be designing and oriented, orienting any park facilities within their subdivisions to meet these standards. There is another impact fee recommendation that we've made, and that is to actually add an increment to your existing impact fee to cover the cost for a new aquatic center and a new community center. Currently, your aquatic center and community center capacity is pretty much maxed out with the population that you have. As the city grows over the next ten to twenty years, you're going to need another aquatic center, another community center, and unless you start collecting incrementally for each, on each new development, some small, some impact fee amount, you won't have the funds to build those facilities as those new residents come to the community. Recommending also that the city makes sure that the current assessment districts are revised. The two that don't allow for any kind of annual inflation should be adjusted because, obviously, the cost of providing the services to those districts is going up with inflation, so those fees need to be adopted, need to be adjusted, and as you know, much of that amount collected is used for park-related facilities. Joint use agreements are an important way by which the city uses facilities that the school district has and shares the school district for recreation opportunities, so this will continue to be important and should be pursued as new schools come online. Also encouraging the city to get some additional training for staff to help enhance grant-writing skills, possibly to help offset some of the reduction in market, Galt Market revenues that will, are projected for the future. And also look for other revenue opportunities from the existing parks and facilities. So, for example, think about getting reservations for some additional group picnic areas, thinking about non-traditional revenue generation such as ground leases for cell towers, donations, sponsorships, those kinds of things, so really kind of expanding where we're getting some additional revenue from. And some kind of cost management strategies, really thinking about the use for, this is a great town for volunteerism, as we've, I think, seen this evening, and really trying to leverage that in a very focused way to help offset the need for additional staff, and making sure that any new facilities that do come online or any renovations to facilities are really oriented to manage costs, energy costs, and to keep those costs at a minimum. As I mentioned, we did cost projections over a ten-year planning horizon. We did use the general plan, population, and growth assumptions so that these two plans would be in sync, and as you, as you may know, the development of a parks master plan is dictated by your general plan. The general plan requires you to have a parks master plan, so this is actually sort of an implementing document of that goal and policies within the general plan that instructs the city to go to a greater level of planning detail for parks. The cost projections that we've identified include about forty-six point seven million dollars for the current population. There are non-capital costs of about fifty-five point eight, again, that's over the ten-year period, and this does not include additional parks that will be built and maintained by impact fees and assessments on the new people who come into the community. So we are assuming that, and our recommendations for impact fees are such that as new people come in, they will be sort of paying as they, you collect the fees as you need them to provide the parks for those people as they come in. Various revenue projections, the sources from which those costs would be covered, Parks and Recreation, that's basically your fees and reservations, those kinds of things. Program fees, six point one million. The Galt Market over the ten years projected to be about thirty-two point six million. Assessment districts, twelve million. General fund is fairly modest amount at three point nine million. Grants is an even more modest amount at one point three million. In this case, we only projected that grant revenue would be pursued for the trails projects because that is where most of the grant money is available right now, so we try to be fairly realistic about the prospects of the state moving forward in terms of having money for grants, so we're fairly conservative in that regard. Expected amount of impact fees to be collected based on your current fee with some inflation adjustment, thirty-five point five million, and then another six million and other sources will be needed to basically make your costs and your revenues balance out. Some of the ideas for where that six million might come from, again, some additional fee structure that we already mentioned, adjustments to the assessment districts, expanding the impact fees, as I discussed earlier, some of the cost avoidance, and then some of the alternative funding strategies, sponsorship, site leases, advertising, those kinds of things. So that's six million, basically, over a ten-year period from these various sources. Where do we go from here? As Boyce mentioned, we've been accepting comments from people for several weeks now and will for another, I think, about week or so, and certain of your comments this evening. We'll be making changes to the master plan, and at that point, we will have a final document. The secret document is already underway, and we expect, we are preparing a mitigated negative declaration. The administrative draft for that should be available at the end of this month, late May, and then we expect to have a draft, mitigated neg deck, out to the public for review for thirty days sometime in mid-June, depending on how quickly city staff can turn around the admin draft comments. So following that and responses to comments and questions from the public on that document, we expect to bring both the neg deck, the secret document, and the final master plan for adoption to City Council early August, mid-August, depending on what your calendar looks like. So that is that. Any questions, comments? I'm sure there are.
Andrew, you have some?
Before you start asking questions, I'd like to have Jason review with our consultant on the impact fees.
Just a comment. We're undergoing a process right now of updating all of our impact fees, traffic parks. We've given the consultant all the information that was provided as part of this master plan, and we've done some preliminary estimates as far as what the new impact fees will look like under this new master plan. They're not finalized yet, we're still in the process of reviewing them, but they're looking like to be in the ballpark of about eleven thousand dollars per single-family unit. Current fees are about six thousand, is that right? It's a closer date, so it's significant increase, but again, we're adding significant facilities to the fee program that haven't been funded in the past. So that fee, the entire new fee program, will be brought back to the council probably in the fall, in October, is what we're looking at right now.
Working on the Microsoft and the Staples Community Center sponsorship?
That's right.
Staples. I've been to that one.
Okay. Counsel? Go ahead, Andrew. She said, "Go ahead."
Got a question. I noticed with the, a lot of the survey results, it seemed to be that they were in conflict with the results that you got at your community workshops. Is that something that typically happens when you do these?
I wouldn't necessarily say that they were in conflict. I would say that they probably represent additional points of view about what the priorities are within the community, so it's very dependent on who actually shows up, you know, at your workshop and who's actually responded to the surveys. That was in part the thinking behind having the phone survey, which was representative of the entire city. It was meant to be more of an overview of the whole city. There were certain trends that were consistent, that were repeated frequently across all three input mechanisms.
The phone survey, the question that was asked in regards to what future facilities would you like to see, was that an open-ended question, or was there a list of responses that the people chose from?
List of responses that they chose from.
So everything that we see listed as a result on here on the graph, those were the only options, or were there other options that aren't listed on the graph?
Could you direct me to what page you're looking at, please?
Let me bring it back up. It's page one eighty on the electronic version. The lowest scoring result was bocce ball courts, which looks like it's at about seven percent.
We don't-
It's seventy-six in the master plan.
I was gonna say, we don't have a hundred eighty, yeah. So that's actually the written survey, I believe, that you're looking at?
It said seventy-six, Andrew, seventy-six.
Yeah, seventy-six is the, is actually the written survey.
Okay.
And those were all the categories that received any responses. I believe there were a few others that nobody checked.
Do you know off the top of your head what those were?
I don't.
Well, I'm noticing like the Hofshelp Park, we've got, it looks like about thirty percent, if I'm correct, dedicated to equestrian-type activities, and if you pair that with some of the things that you noted in the opening of this park master plan, the increasing cultural diversity of the community, the fact that nearly half of the families in Galt live below the poverty level, I just, I don't understand why, even in a conceptual drawing for the Hofshelp Park, we're talking about allocating thirty percent of our park property to equestrian activities, when that would typically be a, it'd be an affluent-type activity, and, and Boyce knows this, we've had this conversation before, in the City of Galt, you can't even own a horse.
Are you referring to the southerly portion of the-
Yes.
Part of that is because of the floodplain boundary?
Yeah, that's, that's basically floodplain there. The only thing that we really specified was a horse trailer parking area.
So there's no cost to improving those properties to make them equestrian trails?
No, like, I believe the southern portion of the Hofshelders' floodplain.
And so those trails would be a multi-use trail, could be for walking, hiking, mountain biking, or equestrian, whatever the use would be, it'd simply be a bladed dirt trail in those areas because it is in the floodplain.
If you go back to the, I believe it was the written results, I think the BMX park was the highest-listed response from people that chose to turn in the written paperwork. Just seems to me like that would be a better place to put a BMX park or something along those lines. That would be something that people that actually live here in the city would be able to participate in.
Sure.
It's relatively inexpensive to get into, so it would fit into that category of the families that live below the poverty level.
Yeah, I would just like to point out, Councilmember Meredith, it's just like, if you recall our, the original, our first park master plan in nineteen ninety-two that was done, if you look at that, there's no dog park, there's no skate park. Recreational trends change, and like we said earlier, when we do have enough money, you know, ten, fifteen years from this, we'd have a whole plan of park day on this facility. These are just, this is a tool, a plan, it's nothing set in concrete, and again, recreational trends will change more than likely in ten to fifteen years, and maybe a motocross track or a huge rock, rock line may be one of the amenities at that time, but I do understand what you're saying, the response of the BMX track.
Well, what are we thinking about in regards to addressing all those residents that feel, that responded to that survey and feel that the BMX track or something along those lines was-
One of the other BMX potential sites was the Cost Road site. So below, if you look at the graphic in appendix, the appendix with the three conceptual ideas, and again, these are not cast in stone, there would be a community design process to see what people really want at the time when this is getting built. That southerly section where it shows, I think right now it's just showing conceptually a disc golf course area, that would also be a good area potentially for some kind of a BMX application, so that would, that was also discussed as possibly an idea for that site, and possibly a- a better site too for BMX, because it's closer into the most developed part of the community. So, I would see that at the time when Cost Road is developed and we enter into the community design process, that BMX could easily rise to the surface as a preferred use at that park site also.
Voice with our-
Good representation at the workshop from the group that wanted the BMX park.
I'm sorry?
I was just gonna point out-
Right.
-that at the workshop, there was good representation from the group that wanted to bring that in.
Yeah, and it was specifically captured as one of the possible uses for the Cost Road site in that workshop.
Voice with the net play, play areas, have we determined that those were a success or?
From a maintenance point of view, they've been fantastic. No graffiti, we haven't experienced any vandalism at the locations that we do have. Is it used a lot? I think so. I know, I don't know about-
Would you say that the age breakdown would be for the kids that play with those?
Like, you notice at Monterey Park, we have a much smaller one. The one on Oak Park is much larger for older kids. The one at McCaffrey is medium-sized.
The one at Roundstone's pretty big.
Yes, that is, yes. But just like anything else, you can get smaller sizes.
What I've observed from taking my kids to the park, it seems like parents are hesitant to let their children play on that, because visibly, it looks unsafe. And I've been through all the parks here in the city with my own kids and it seems like out of all of the playground apparatuses spread out all across the city, the net play is used less than anything else. So, from a maintenance standpoint, it might make sense, but the whole point of putting these out there is for children to play and be active and it just doesn't seem like it's a great return on the investment. So, I'm hoping in the future that we step away from the net play play areas and go back to the traditional playground apparatus.
And kind of related to that, one of the outcomes from the ad hoc committee was a, and it's captured in the plan under the recommendations for EP4 existing parks, that there will actually be both a totlot-oriented play structure as well as an older children's-oriented play structure at each park, because they're very different requirements. So, you know, little kids can't play on the structures that the older kids can play on. So, the city is, we're encouraging the city to adopt that as a standard to make sure you've got age-appropriate structures at all parks for both those age groups.
And what was the minimum recommended size of a neighborhood park? I remember reading this in the plan a couple of weeks ago. Was it six acres or was it five acres?
It's smaller than that. It's, well, actually, I think it's four right now. It's four acres right now. Some of their neighborhood parks are smaller, because they were smaller at the time it was built, they were built. But the reason that you don't want them to be terribly small is because the cost per acre of maintenance becomes much higher at a smaller size. And plus, your ability to design improvements is really constrained, you know, at a smaller site, so.
How did we end up, Voice, 10 years ago, with all of these neighborhood parcels that were so small? Was it based on the development impact fees that we were collecting at the time and just the financial aspects of acquiring the property?
Most of the properties in the northeast area were paid to the city as part of the specific plan with the specific developers that came in that did the whole thing that we didn't actually purchase them. They were given to the city as part of their payment or obligation for those impact fees. So, it was really part of the specific planning process that designated which specific site. So, the city essentially said how big those parks were gonna be at that time.
What was this norm of about four acres? Is that something that's been industry standard for a long time?
Exactly, yes. Very common, four to eight acres is typically a typical neighborhood-sized park. So, that allows a play structure and probably some kind of a group picnic area, maybe a couple of sports fields, that kind of thing.
Other comments? Nope. Counsel?
Well, I would just make the comment that I thought Foothills did a great job. I enjoyed being part of the ad hoc committee, because you guys did all the work. And it's such a complete study. I mean, with the financing plan and everything, I think, just think you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again. A couple of quick comments. In joint use, I'd just like to see us still pursue the potential of a performing arts complex with the high school. And what we've kind of talked about was that it would be co-joined to their property at the new high school site, at least back when we talked about it. And one of the advantages of us owning it and yet looking like it's part of their campus is we could rent it out for anything, wedding reception, for example, and they could have a champagne toast, but a high school facility, I understand, can't have alcohol. Therefore, it's very hard for them to raise funds to be able to afford it, so something like that that I think we need in this community of performing arts center. We can still get the Delta Campus on our southern boundary, perhaps that will pick up that need, but otherwise, I think we have to be looking at that. And in the joint use, I'd like to see us talking to the nature conservancy. We've got an access road that runs along the rail track going out to our waste treatment plant and then turns into a paved road and it keeps going. And maybe that or something like it could be access to the perimeter. I know the nature conservancy is sensitive to people walking around their general land, but we had talked with Mike Eaton back when he was running it to perhaps create a raised observation area where you could take a school group out or other groups and have some structural information and certainly go along with our earth festival, things like that.
Yes, and we, I think that kind of regional thinking about trails is gonna be so important and it's really gonna enhance the city's ability to get funding-
Right.
-to do trails, if you can show that there's a partnership. And in fact, that is one of the trail recommendations, that you really focus on regional partnerships for trail planning, definitely.
And like I said, emphasis on some solar in areas where it either runs the lighting or the restrooms or, I mean, I think as a guideline of our park policy, we ought to just incorporate that. And in some of our parks, like the Cost property, that kind of goes down to the creek that's in a floodplain that has no perhaps annual use to it, one of the possibilities is to put solar panels just on three-foot risers. I mean, once you know what the floodplain is, so they're up out of that, but it gives you a large exposure in an area that may have no other use. And then, it can be on shade structures, parking structures, and there's all kinds of things. But I know we talked with the high school district about the new high school, they have a floodplain also, and looking at maybe putting some solar out in that area, because they're not gonna invest to make it into a soccer field or anything else, because floods have destroyed it, so.
So, you're actually talking about not just, you know, the energy efficiency of the structures you've built, but actually trying to get some revenue possibly.
Right.
And that's, I don't know, if you're familiar with Butte County, at their government center up in Oroville, they've done a really extensive deploy, deployment of solar panels for that purpose.
Yeah.
And it's been very successful for them.
Like to look at it, because it could pay for some of the-
Yep.
-and offset some of the fees we're proposing to impose on people. So, anyway, otherwise, I think you had some great thoughts and captured a lot of the neat things and the hard part's always figuring out how to pay for it. And so, and Voice, if you don't hurry up on some of these, it'll be the Voice Memorial Park, you know, we gotta get going here, so.
So, Voice, this is the draft and you'll bring it back-
After all the final comments.
Is that like, maybe August, September? I'm just kind of guessing. Okay.
And with the secret document at the same time.
Okay. Okay. Well, thanks, everyone.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, good job. So, direction? No, any direction? They're just gonna bring it back. Next item. We will adjourn to the redevelopment committee. Roll call, please.
Board members, Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here. Public comment?
I have no secret sheet.
None. First item, information consent agenda, if you will read those, please.
I'll read them, and then I think Kurt has a comment. Three items, the first one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of April 21st, 2009. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. And number three, education revenue augmentation fund, which is ERAF, payment as authorized by AB 1389. Kurt?
And we would ask that the council pull item number C off of there at this time. We don't need to take action, I gave you a little sheet from California Redevelopment Association last week. That lawsuit was, they were successful. This levy was found to be unconstitutional and we will not have to make this payment, so.
Correct.
That's it.
Okay. Is there a motion on the remaining items? Go move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further comment? None. Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. For all. Department reports?
Excuse me. The treasurer's report for the period ending March 2009.
Thank you, I just wanna quickly mention that the redevelopment agency earned approximately about 1.83% in interest during the month of March and the majority of the funds are in the state of California account, the late funds, and I ask for your approval this evening.
All moved.
Seconded. Any other comments, questions? None. Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Pass. For all.
Next item, and by government code, the investment policy for the fiscal year for '09, '10 must be brought before you in a public meeting. I don't think we'll have a lot of public comment here tonight, but it is being brought before you. There are no changes from last year and I ask for you to adopt that policy.
Comments, there are motions?
I'll move we adopt the city of Galt redevelopment agency investment policy fiscal year 2009, 2010 as presented.
Second.
Seconded. Further comment? None. Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. For all.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The item before you at this time is the Consolidated Fabricators Owner Participation Agreement. Consolidated Fabricators is a company in Galt, out on Simmerhorn, currently operates a garbage bin manufacturing facility. It's out in, Simmerhorn currently employs about 35 people. When the economy was better, they employed approximately twice that number. They are proposing to build a 54,000-square-foot operation on approximately 6.75 acres on the corner of industrial and live oak, this is southeast corner. This new facility would be separate from the other facility. They would fabricate steel studs for commercial construction and other related uses. The Galt Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for the facility at its meeting on April 9th, 2009. Some time ago, the city had several meetings with Consolidated Fabricators talking about the necessary improvements, particularly on live oak out there. In the past, the city has, or the redevelopment agency has funded improvements in the industrial park. We put in the streets, curb better sidewalk, the water lines, sewer lines, essentially made development out there possible. No improvements were done at live oak at that time, which is the northerly boundary of that industrial park and indeed, the northerly boundary of the redevelopment agency. City Development Standards requires curb better sidewalk be installed along there as well as undergrounding of utilities, streetlights and so forth. Consolidated Fabricators asked the redevelopment agency to assist in funding those improvements. They would, they would do the construction, they would do the improvements, and the city, once they were completed, the city would reimburse Consolidated Fabricators up to $300,000. The cost of improvements are slightly more than that, but the city or the redevelopment agency, total obligation would not exceed $300,000. What you have before you is a resolution within agreements. Staff's recommendation is the redevelopment agency board adopt the resolution approving the agreement. There is a, on your counter, there was some slight modifications to the resolution that you have in front of you, so the resolution that staff recommends you adopt is this alternative. And essentially, what it does is it takes out one of the clauses that relates to a section of the health and safety code that is not necessary, according to our city attorney, so we have deleted that from this new resolution. There's a representative from Consolidated Fabricators here, if you have any questions about their new operation. Otherwise, staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Comments from counsel?
I would just ask, when you make these metal studs and you sell them, do you sell them from a wholesale point of view or will the city of Galt get any sales tax?
Thank you. Make great some tax. The bulk of it is wholesale.
Okay. Still glad to have you, but I'd like to have the sales tax too.
I know there's just part of it that it does, but it's a smaller stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from counsel?
On the street improvements, and I'm looking, this map we have is kind of small, so I'm trying to interpret some of it, but is there, would there be any way to access the property for now or forever without some of the costly improvements that we're basically trying to subsidize?
Access it just off of industrial?
Mm-hmm. They were spending all that money on live oak, and that's really what we're talking about. And instead of doing that, just don't put them in or don't put them in at this time or there's nothing else on live oak. Live oak, at that point, is a dirt road to get to our, what you guys so-called reservoirs, I call them metal water tanks.
This side's paved, it's further to the-
Yeah, once you go north of industrial, west of industrial, then it turns to dirt.
Right.
But it's actually a major truck route access out of that industrial park. I don't know how it affects their circulation if they cut off that access point off of live oak. I'm assuming that it would have some significant impacts.
Delivery.
They come in one side and go out the other.
Plus, there's several businesses on the county side, this goes, almost goes down to the entrance.
Right.
So- Eventually, you'll have live oak paved and improved all the way down to the water treatment facility, because the north, the other side is 20 acres that's owned by KMS and they would like to develop that at some point as well, so.
Well, what I'm trying to get at is there, is there any way we can even phase it, let them get up and running without all this front-end cost that we're just being asked to assist with because of those improvements or any of them?
Well, these are the city's requirements-
Oh, I know.
-for development, so the council would have to waive those requirements?
You would also, and I would have to, I don't know how it affects drainage on the NDS permits and those sorts of things, because there's gonna have to be some onsite swales and it has to go to an approved drainage system. This would be all underground drainage, which is now a current ditch, basically.
Hey Kurt?
And it may be more cost-effective to do it all while you're there, I'm just saying, is there-
Well, that's the other point, yeah, is they are gonna be mobilized for all the construction out there.
Right.
But Kurt, in the conditional use permit, were these improvements part of that permit? Were these a condition of approval of the project?
I believe they are, because they're standard conditions. That is correct. I mean, we require full drainage improvements, that's just a-
Oh, I know. Okay, well, I was just asking before we, the other thing I would ask is to be sure that there's no issue as to where they are or anything else. I always remember back when we had to rip out the three-year-old or five-year-old sidewalks on Twin Cities Road.
This is in the right right of way.
I just wanna be sure that, well, just across the street, the county, I just hate to find out in three or five years, somebody comes back and they're gonna widen that road and rip all this $300,000 of work out and do it again. I'm just saying, now is the time, because we've been there before. Not that anyone meant to be, it just happened. All right. I have no problem with staff's recommendation unless there was some way to save these folks and us some money to get them up and running, but as I say, given that it's probably more cost-effective to do it all once the equipment's on site than to do it at a later date.
Okay, directions from counsel?
And thank you to you for trying to expand and create some more jobs in our community.
Your motion?
Don't move.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Oh, seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments? None. Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 All right. We will adjourn and reconvene to adult city council. City clerk's report?
I actually have a few things. Um, we are trying to schedule a budget study session and I think the ideal date would be May twenty-sixth. We do have some alternate dates if that doesn't work for everybody.
That's Tuesday after Memorial Day?
That's Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Only to those that took too much advantage of Memorial Day.
I also have May twenty-eighth or June eighth.
I know the twenty-eighth does work for me.
Okay.
Does not. Eight sounds like it does. That sounds like a Friday or something.
The eighth is, June eighth is a, I'm sorry, a Monday.
Oh, okay.
Um, we also have June twelfth, which is a Friday. I know you guys hate Friday. So, it could be the Tuesday after Memorial Day weekend. Um, can't be the twenty-eighth. Well, it could be the twenty-eighth, May twenty-eighth, a Thursday.
A Wednesday, that one I know doesn't work for me.
The chambers are taken up till five. High school graduation?
Yes.
What about the Tuesday after Memorial Day?
I'm pretty flexible, so whatever works for everybody else.
I may not be here physically, but, and from where I'll be, I may not be here mentally either.
So, it'd be that day or June eighth? Depends what you guys prefer.
I'd say June eighth, Monday.
It's at after graduation and everything, sports.
June eighth, okay.
Like a winner?
Will that be just a regular council meeting?
No, we, we don't want to do it on a council meeting. Um, this is the final mid-year budget process. We think that it's important that the council only deal with this issue so that you can see where we're heading for this year and potentially the year after.
No, what I meant, will it be like at seven o'clock in the evening?
Well, whatever time you would like to have.
Will it be an all-day affair or...
About two hours.
Maybe start earlier?
We can start as early as everyone can get here.
Earlier's good for us.
Yeah, me too.
Let me know.
Six o'clock is fine.
Yep.
Six.
Six.
June eighth?
June eighth at six o'clock. Okay, perfect. Um, couple, couple more issues. I, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I wanted to bring up the, um, we had a couple of events that have happened since I was here. One is our hazardous waste event that Jennifer Cannell coordinated. I think it was very successful. Um, and I believe there was a good public turnout for that and, um, anyway, thanks to Jennifer for that. The weekend after that, we had our shred it event, which is fairly new, but we did, um, we did have about seventy-five cars come through, which is three times as many as we did in the fall. So, that was successful. I don't usually mention events that are really for life. High school event was last Saturday and they raised approximately fifty thousand dollars from our, from our little town. So, yes.
It's probably not the best weather either for them.
Not the best weather. The turnout wasn't as good, but the money was good, but we couldn't walk on the track. We walked around the edge of, yeah, so plywood. Uh, just a couple of reminders. On May thirteenth, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting at seven o'clock here in the council chambers. On May fourteenth, the planning commission meeting will be held at seven PM here in the council chambers. On May twenty-first, the beautification committee meeting at three thirty in the city hall community room. That takes us beyond our next council meeting, but I want to highlight two events.
Could you please be quiet so we can get to the agenda, Mr. Jeffrey?
Oh, the farmer's market. That's right. Our first farmer's market. Well, that's on Mother's Day, right? Um, Sunday at the corner of Lincoln Way and C Street in the premier West Bank parking lot. So, everyone come out to the farmer's market. Just two more highlights. Um, the city hall offices will be closed on May twenty-fifth in honor of Memorial Day and we have scheduled our first public safety committee meeting, which will be held six PM in the Pachetti Community Room at the police department. I think that's everything. Thank you.
Staff reports?
Yeah, I need to announce that we have an athlete in my office, Jennifer Cannell, placed fourteenth out of fifty-four in her age group on the half, half a marathon walk Saturday and she placed about a hundred and seventy out of five hundred and she did the walk in under fifteen minutes per mile.
Wow. Did you give her a medal?
Uh, we're going to give her something, but she's, uh, we want to know, we want to identify that it was a truly accomplishment.
Get certificate for a foot massage.
Nope. She said she was well-prepared.
Very good.
Good for her. And that's all.
Any comments? None from staff? None? Council member, vice mayor?
Uh, May is a busy month. It's bike month, uh, which coordinates with our, um, safe routes to school, um, encouraging people to ride bikes for safety reasons. And mentioning that, I just have to say, Greg, you have done such a good job. You took a little project that we did with the high school and you're bringing in the bucks. And if you hadn't made that effort to go for those grants, we would have lost, what, four hundred thousand dollars at least. So, I say thank you so much. In addition to that, uh, some of our youth are participating in, it's called California Voices, youth film premiere. A group from Galt will have put together a film and it's called American Ashes and it's dealing with gang violence, drugs, peer pressure and family crisis. And it's a short film. I will be attending that and it's open to the public. Um, see what day it is.
Isn't it in the front?
Is it in the front? Yeah. May fourteenth at the Crest Theater and it's from six to eight-thirty. And let's see, well, oh, I attended the luncheon for the CAPS volunteers and we honored the, um, the CAPS volunteers and, um, the many volunteers, I guess you'd say, in the police department besides just the patrolmen. And it was, um, excuse me, it's very enjoyable. Um, I've attended a CAPS meeting, um, as an alternate and am on the youth master plan committee, which we've had one meeting and I'll be reporting on that as we progress. I think that's it. Oh, no, one more thing. Our shop local, uh, campaign, we've had two meetings. The first one was at the chamber office. It was so packed that, uh, the next meeting, we had to move to another location. There's a lot of enthusiasm and, uh, and it's a combination of not just the chamber, but other business people and the city as well. So, that looks like there's going to be a lot of interest in that.
Okay. Council member, Greg?
Yeah, seeing the gentleman here also, I want to congratulate Tractor Supply and Ride Aid. They're both up and running and, uh, from my observations, seem to be getting a number of folks out there and, um, not here to plug anyone in particular, but Tractor Supply's got a lot more things than just stuff for tractors. If you haven't been inside, they've got clothing and pet supplies and, so anyway, congratulations to that shopping center and to our staff for getting them through the process and open and sales tax and jobs in our community. Uh, Earth Day, I spent at UC Davis. Uh, they had a, a whole bunch of people, Secog, the air district, just a cast of thousands that, uh, supported a, a gathering. It was called the I-80 Summit, Corridor Summit, and it was basically a discussion of that section from the San Francisco Bay area to Sacramento. The city's along it, the Capitol corridor train commuter traffic. We just talked about all the issues that go along with that and where the future of that corridor is going. So, uh, it was, it was, I thought, pretty well attended. Um, they made the mistake of serving lunch and then having only a little bit after lunch and so our attendance dropped considerably after lunch and there was few diehard of us left. Um, but it was a collection of both professional staff, elected, uh, the UC Davis folks. And, and through Secog, we're actually, we've partnered on a lot more things with the UC Davis. And in fact, the, the next item I mentioned, the cap to cap trip, uh, UC Davis had a very large presence this year, which they've never had before. And my main focus was the air quality and the transportation teams. And just on my air quality team, we had three UC Davis people because they do a lot in modeling and studies and predictions of the effects of land use and transportation, how that affects air quality and other things. So, uh, thank you to them specifically. Uh, the cap to cap trip went very well. Uh, had a lot of meetings. As I say, I served primarily on the air quality team, working on a number of issues that we're lobbying our federal government for. In particular, we're asking them to fund the mandates they've already put in place and not to send any more our way that don't have funding that comes along with it. So, we talked a lot about that. Also talked about the federal transportation priorities for the Sacramento region and from my role at Secog representing our city. Of course, we talked a lot about those issues and we had a very nice handout for congressional members of what our priorities are. And it was very timely because of the stimulus money that's flowing. And thanks to Congressman Lundgren, he got the Secretary of Transportation to speak to the cap to cap group for our opening breakfast. And we'll be pressing hard for the, what was the IC P that turned into the safety loo that will become the eventual new transportation plan, whatever that's going to be for our nation. Uh, we are poised, I think, very well for the Sacramento region and our community to, uh, be a part of that reauthorization bill. Now, there's talk that it'll be this year. I'm skeptical of that. In fact, I fear if they rush it through this year, it won't be as good as it could be, but we'll take what we can get. But, uh, hopefully next year at the latest. So, um, we had meetings with the usual folks, um, representatives and/or the members themselves, Congressman Lundgren, Matt Sui, um, McNerney, our senators Feinstein and Boxer. Some of our committee met with other folks. I met with Cardoza and Radovich because I happen to know them and they're to the south of us. And our air quality issues and our transportation issues run down the Solomon Keane Valley. Some people met with the northern folks up into some of those areas. So, we were well represented in the meetings. While I was back there on transportation issues and the different meetings, I did have a chance to continue pressing a little bit. Our, our hopeful Twin Cities and the roundabouts, I was able to give Lundgren's staff a heads up on that, that that's something we're working. In fact, I, I literally got to meet with Lundgren's staff five days that trip. And I saw or met with Lundgren four of the five. In fact, the third day, he said, which hat are you wearing today and which one are you in the three o'clock meeting tomorrow? So, uh, he knew Galt was there and got to press our issues with him. And in doing that, we followed up with our, uh, requests that are going to go through the committee. We've been through it before, so we'll go over it again, but these are still active. And, uh, I know some of you got the little video thing I did, I hope sent to you. Liz, did you send that around?
Thanks.
All right. Anyway, I, uh, I showed that to Lundgren's staff and they got a kick out of that. But, uh, thank you to his staff and our staff. Uh, we'll keep fighting for these and, uh, see what comes out of committee at the other end. Also had a chance while I was back there to talk further, uh, with some of the other cities and some of the people concerned on, as I keep mentioning, the ACE train concept. And it was a new development that, uh, came out back there while I was meeting with the people. Uh, Stacy, who's the executive director of the ACE trains now that's working with us on this project as well as Phil Tonino, um, I'm not sure if I can announce it yet because I don't know if we got signed, but I think I can. There was going to be a memorandum of understanding relative to stimulus funding that's put in for high-speed rail. But there's a sub-tier of high-speed rail, which is commuter rail until there is high-speed rail. And we are pressing and working, uh, to get the high-speed rail to not stop at Stockton and then just go over to San Jose. We want it to come right up into Sacramento. And there apparently is funding and we're working on finding out what the definition of that funding is to begin acquiring the right-of-way for the high-speed train if and when that's going to happen. But in the meantime, commuter trail, trains on normal rail can be put in that right-of-way or even be a part of the right-of-way into the future because this could be another twenty, thirty years before they get around to it. But in the meantime, we could be running the train we've been talking about from Stockton, Sacramento, that would stop in Lowdy, Galt, El Pro. So, I was talking to some of the other people. Um, meetings went well, hopefully at MOU. And the High-Speed Rail Commission is talking about having the commission I'm serving on as the advisory commission to oversee this area for the right-of-way, which would be a very nice thing for us. So, I'll keep you posted if that, that can happen. But, um, I, I just continue to be hopeful that there's some funding in here to get us that. So, other than that, there were other things on the cap to cap, uh, that went well as far as working on future programs we're doing. And, uh, it was, uh, I think, a very fruitful meeting. Thanks again to Pete Ewich, who set up a lot of the meetings I attended while we were back there and the things he continues to do for us, so.
Carol, will you be the vice chair of the air quality board?
I am, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Yeah.
Good job. Andrew?
Just going to read the, uh, police report. Our patrol division handled two hundred and eighty-six cases in the month of March, closed one hundred and sixty-five of them for a fifty-seven point seven percent closure rate. Seventy-nine of those cases were, uh, self-initiated. Six cases were returned for correction. Our patrol officers made a hundred and twenty-one arrests for the month and wrote a hundred and twenty-two moving citations. Our investigations division handled a total of forty-seven cases in March and closed thirty-two for an eighty-six percent closure rate. Uh, we've seen a spike in gang violence in the last week. So, uh, be careful in your communities. If you see any signs of increased gang activity, make sure you bring it to the attention of the police department. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. With that, last week, uh, just recently, we had the mayor's forum on gang awareness on our community. I believe that it was very well received. Uh, we had approximately fifty to fifty-five, some people said fifty-eight because people come in and out. Uh, not only a thank you to the Galt Police Department, city clerk, city manager, crime stoppers, neighborhood watch, California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, and members of the public. The main focus in the presentation was not only on awareness and exactly, Andrew, what you had said, you know, is please call, you know, no confrontational. But the focus also was on teamwork, teamwork and teamwork with working with multiple agencies. So, I thank, my thanks personally to all those people that attended and the agencies that put that program on. Uh, one of the other things that I ended with staff, I think Kurt and Jason, you were there, the Ride Aid grand opening and ribbon cutting and Liz. And not only is that a, uh, nice, uh, very well-stocked and kind of useful, user-friendly place, but, uh, gee, maybe I should not say this, but I will anyway. We, we found that they have Thrifty ice cream, right?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, see, here, here comes the, their favorites right now.
I got through a couple gallons.
Yeah, but how many of you, other than Voice and I, used to work for Thrifty and scooped it at a nickel scoop?
Here comes, that's why I said that because I knew that they were going to say something.
A lot of scoops. Nickel scoop.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Well, we will adjourn. We will adjourn the council meeting at ten-ten. Thank you.
Jeffrey graduated to a shovel.
I mentioned that.
Thanks. My ice cream closed at ten or eleven.
Speaking of ice cream, some of them are by you, aren't they open?
No, I'm, yeah, no, they're closed.
McDonald's, I hope, they can't remember if they closed at 10 or 11.
Oh, I don't think so.
I'll find out.
During the week.
You know, people have this one, they have this McDonald's.
What are you going to bring for breakfast?